Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 3, 2023, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Okay, great. First up is the approval of our minutes from April 4, 2023. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the Commission to approve the minutes of April 4, 2023.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That is four zero, four one zero. Is that what it is? Abstains in the middle? I don't know.
I don't know.
Four in favor, one abstention. Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. We have one item tonight on that. It's for AFP-9541, dash 2023, an 862 square foot, one and two-story rear addition with exterior landing and stairs at 309 Booth Street in the MXD mixed-use development zone. This is an amendment to final site plan. And again, it's a consent agenda item. Are there any questions for staff for the consent agenda?
I did not see if it was HOA-approved. I didn't notice that in the packet.
The letter was in there.
Yeah, well, did you see the map?
Yep.
And that's, I have no problem with it.
All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Don't have to worry about where the abstain votes go in that cap, right? All right, next up is our, we have a recommendation of the Mayor and Council for one item, and this is on SK-9497-2023 sketch plan for the Nike site property at 770 Muddy Branch Road, proposing a maximum of 380 multifamily dwelling units and associated open space and amenities in the MXD mixed-use development zone. And again, this is a recommendation of the Mayor and City Council. Our record is closed, but we'll have discussion and a motion or motion for recommendation tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to let you know that I did watch the re-broadcast, so I feel that I can elaborate this.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. And presenting from staff is Kirk Eby. Good evening, Kirk.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a recommendation on sketch plan application SK-9497-2023, which is for the Nike missile launch site at 770 Muddy Branch Road. The Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission held a joint public hearing on March 20, 2023, and there were nine speakers from the public. The Commission's record closed on April 21 at 5:00 p.m. with a total of 54 exhibits. And hopefully it's up? Oh? Oh, okay, it is. So this is a, this is an aerial that shows the location of the subject property, which is west of Muddy Branch Road, south of the Timberbrook condominium community, east and north of the Lakewins Ridge community, and north of the Muddy Branch Square Shopping Center. And as outlined during the joint public hearing, sketch plan proposes to construct up to 380 multifamily dwelling units on approximately 14 acres of land that it was formerly used by the federal government and will be redeveloped.
Oh, yeah. And silence your devices. Meant to say that earlier.
So the sketch plan, which is exhibit three in the record, is shown here, and it does consist of four block areas, A, B, C, and D, separated by green areas. And along, there's also an amenity area between blocks A and B. And the applicant identified a potential site for a commemorative installation of some sort to commemorate the Nike missile site, and that is the star there near the entrance to the site, to the right there. Each block includes one building up to five stories in height with surface parking. Staff notes that the dash line shown on the drawing represent the extent of both the parking and building area for purposes of this sketch plan, and it's not just the building footprint. The four blocks are served by a single private road that connects to Timberbrook Lane and Muddy Branch Road via the little stubout of School Drive right here. So, in response to comments that were received during the public hearing on March 20, the applicant has submitted a supplemental statement, which is exhibit number 53. The statement addresses four main issues that were raised during the public hearing: traffic, compatibility, remediation, and more detailed design. So this slide is first focused on the first issue, which is traffic. So the applicant has provided a copy of the preliminary traffic study that they mentioned during the public hearing, and that is exhibit number 54. As part of that study, the applicant performed some additional traffic analysis of site distance, queuing, turning, and single-point access into the property. As mentioned during the public hearing, the preliminary traffic study shows that a traffic light will be warranted at the intersection of Muddy Branch Road and School Drive once this development project is completed. The new traffic light should provide a safer means of access to the site and should increase the safety of pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles that are crossing or turning onto Muddy Branch Road. The study also shows that the peak hour traffic volumes from the 380 multifamily units, that's the maximum, 380 multifamily units, would be 141 trips in the morning and 184 trips in the afternoon peak hour. So the applicant is proposing to stripe the existing School Drive stubout pavement, which currently doesn't have any sort of pavement markings on it. And that stubout does provide the primary access to both the private road or driveway that goes up to this property and Timberbrook Lane, which is the private road that goes to the Timberbrook condominiums. The existing pavement is wide enough for the three lanes, and the applicant is proposing to create one inbound lane and two outbound lanes. And one of the outbound lanes will allow left turns and straight-through movement, and the other outbound lane will allow right turn movements. And as part of that striping proposal, the applicant also performed queuing analysis to determine the impact on the private road that serves the property, Timberbrook Lane, and of course, that School Drive stubout area. And they really did sort of two queue studies. One is sort of the normal peak hour condition, and the other one is a sort of the worst-case scenario, 95th percentile queuing situation. So this slide is showing the majority peak hour condition. So most of the time, this is what the peak hour would look like. So there's going to be a total of three vehicles queued, two that are queued to turn right, and then one that's queued to turn either left or go straight through. And so on this drawing, it's a little tricky to see, but the purple, these purple rectangles here, these represent the three vehicles that I was just mentioning. So this slide actually shows the maximum queuing, that worth, that 95th percentile, that so-called worst-case scenario during the peak travel hour. And so that would result in a little more than seven cars in the queue. So six of those cars would be queued along the School Drive stubout. One car would be queued on the private drive that goes up to the Nike site property. And then part of a car would be queued on the part that goes up to Timberbrook Lane. So all this is mathematical. So when you look at the little purple areas here, all of these rectangles are, you know, one full car, and you'll note on the Timberbrook Lane, it's sort of a half of a rectangle, so a square, to represent that it's less than one car that would be queued there. In the applicant's report, they did note that all the queued cars would pass through the intersection during a single traffic light cycle. And so that basically shows that this would work under the scenarios that they're proposing with the three striped lanes. The other issues that were, or the other three issues that were addressed by the applicant's supplemental statement, which again is exhibit 53, is shown on this slide. So the applicant notes that the proposed density for this project is compatible with the existing density found in the adjacent Timberbrook condominiums and Lakewins Ridge condominiums. Proposed five-story buildings will be located away from the edges of the property and the existing residential buildings, and will be screened with landscaping buffers to try and, you know, mitigate the fact that they're a little bit, they're one story taller than the other buildings that are over there. Proposed buffers along the outer edges of the property will provide privacy for the existing residential buildings and will discourage cut-through pedestrian traffic, which, both of which were requested by the adjacent communities. And in response to questions about environmental remediation, the applicant has provided some additional information about their participation in the voluntary cleanup program, or VCP, which is a program that is run by the Maryland Department of the Environment. And lastly, the applicant notes that the additional detail regarding building height and traffic, parking, safety, and other issues will be provided as part of the schematic development plan application, which is the next level of review, since this, of course, is just a sketch plan, which is supposed to be a little bit more of a high-level kind of view. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Mayor and City Council on sketch plan application. And as a reminder, this is the first step in a multi-step development review process, which will precede any actual construction. And should the sketch plan be approved, it would be followed by a schematic development plan that would provide more detail, as previously mentioned, and then, of course, the final site plan or site plans, depending on how they decide to move forward with that. Staff is supportive of the application and recommends the Planning Commission make the following two motions. And the additional information about staff's recommendation may be found in the staff analysis that was included in tonight's meeting packet. So the first, the first motion that staff recommends is that the Planning Commission, based upon the findings presented in staff analysis, the applicant's testimony, and the evidence in the record, find that events since the adoption of the 2003 master plan make the land use recommendation in that plan no longer relevant in accordance with Section 20-18A of the city code. And then the second motion that we are asking for is that staff recommends the Planning Commission, based upon findings presented in staff analysis, the applicant's testimony, and the evidence in the record, recommend approval of sketch plan SK-9497-2023 to the Mayor and City Council with no conditions. And staff is available to answer any questions.
A reminder that our record is closed, so we'll be just clarifying the position for the recommendation. Questions for staff? Everybody? Go ahead.
What are the next steps for the potential traffic signal?
So if the sketch plan is approved, then once they submit their schematic development plan, they would do a full traffic impact analysis that would then be reviewed by the city, the county. And so I guess that would sort of be the next step, would be that more robust review of the traffic signal. The signal itself, if it does eventually get to be installed, that would happen sort of after all of the planning approvals happen. And, but probably, you know, the city would want to see that installed, you know, prior to at least the last building being constructed, but that's something that would be sort of dealt with during a future review.
Right. So the county letter is very preliminary.
Correct. Although the county transportation staff did agree with the applicant's consultant that a traffic signal would be warranted with the additional 380 multifamily units.
Mr. Chair, the sketch plan that we're looking at tonight, the three buildings that are opposed, can they be moved once the sketch plan is approved? In other words, whether cited right now, they can be moved around at a later date?
Right. So as I mentioned earlier, the dash line shown on the sketch plan represent both the building and the parking. So when they come in, when the next step happens with a schematic development plan, or should the next step happen with schematic development plan, the building's locations would actually be cited. And the applicant did testify that they were looking to place the buildings farther away from the edges, or as far away from the edges as possible, with the parking sort of on the outer edges. So, you know, at that time, we would have more detail about where exactly the buildings would go.
And accessibility for the public, not for, not for transportation, not for cars, but accessibility for individuals to go from that site to, let's say, the shopping center nearby or to another development, would that be also part of the sketch plan, or is that something that's going to be?
So that, they do show one connection on the sketch, well, they showed two connections on the sketch plan. One of them is along the private driveway that comes into the development that would then connect with Timberbrook Lane, across the School Drive stubout. The other connection they're showing is from the, is to the south to the Muddy Branch Square Shopping Center. You know, there was a lot of discussion at the public hearing about the desire of the surrounding neighborhood, not of Lakewins Ridge, to not have connections to them, even, not even pedestrian connections. But that is something that can be explored further during the schematic development plan. So the sketch plan really doesn't lock any of that in necessarily, but it does certainly suggest that, you know, removing the connection shown here might be more of a difficult step to do at schematic development plan, but certainly adding additional connections would not be really what's shown here on the sketch plan.
Thanks. Any other questions? Let me piggyback on Commissioner Hopkins' question about the traffic and trip generation and all of the things we'll go into figuring out, the intersection and the like. And I appreciate they showed sort of a diagrammatic way to understand what the load might be on queuing, but we obviously don't get that now until the data's a little bit more reliable and if there's more to it. Is there anything precluding whatever that show, whatever that data shows us eventually at SDP or whenever it happens, if it happens? There's nothing constraining the intersection for improvements. If it, if somebody, you know, comes through here and we look at it and it decides, and explains that the load is, you know, twice what it's showing on that diagram, or it's that, but it's not really, the geometry doesn't work the way that picture shows it, we could expect and, we could expect that there could be improvements in the intersection, and there's places, there's ways to do that, and that would be fully within the purview of this, this plan development.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And certainly at the next stage, the schematic development plan, that's when there would be enough information to really look at, take a harder look at the geometry design, as you said, and determine whether there's some improvements that could flow better.
It's fair to say, right, that off-site improvements could extend to the neighboring intersections as well. So if there was a traffic load that created a burden, it was an off-site solution.
Potentially, I mean, up to a certain point, obviously. You know, if, if there's already a problem there, that's not being sort of caused by this particular development, I think would be more difficult for the city to require those improvements. Certainly, the city can ask for things. But if there was something that this development was actually causing, then there certainly could be mitigation that would be needed.
And I'll repackage the question. I mean, to be clear, I want to, I want to make it clear to everybody watching this that we don't assume that that little diagram, that little photoshopped photo is producing an actual solution. It just simply illustrates what the problem might be, and we'll take it on as a full design issue at SDP or at final site plan, whenever that happens.
Right. This is, not to sound too corny, but this is a sketchy-looking diagram of what the conditions will be, because this is a sketch plan.
Yes, indeed. And I think the same goes for things like buffers, things like actual, the relative site sections that explain the impact of the building height to neighboring communities, things like that. All of that visual and all of that actual geometry will understand better when and if this moves to SDP, and can affect then as well. We really can't affect too much about the three-dimensional qualities of this at this point, but we can when it moves to the next level.
Correct.
And of course, detailed information on APFO too, right?
That's correct. In the preliminary background report, staff did include, you know, a quick overview of what the impacts could be to the, to the APFO requirements, particularly the schools, obviously. But certainly, once they submit, you know, should this get approved, and then they submit a schematic development plan, at that time, the APFO does kick in, and they would have to show that they are satisfying the public's needs.
Thank you.
All right. Any other issues? Here's where I think we are. I think it's a reasonable first step to understand what could be, what could happen with this site. And so most of our questions, most of, I think, the issues that were brought up during the public hearing and during, during comment that we received from the public, very legitimate issues to be resolved, but can't be until this, if this were to move to the next level, and that's when a lot of that happens. And we could, at that point, decide it's really not going to work, you know, based on those sorts of things. But I think at this point, the numbers, the basic diagram, and most of the outlying issues that we know will be addressed in future phases is, leaves it in a place I think we can recommend moving forward, but I'm, I would defer to the rest of the Commissioner.
I agree.
Yep. Okay. And let the study continue and let it figure out if this stuff can really fall into place the way we, we think it can.
Okay.
Any, any?
Just, this is an exciting first step in reusing a, you know, what was a condemned federal piece of property. It's really, it's a wonderful reuse, found dirt.
Excuse me. It would be very helpful if you all would speak a little bit louder.
Thank you. I understand. Okay, I'm sorry. And I'll ask you all, please don't shout out. I'm happy if you raise your hand or, we've got a record in play that we got to be careful of, it's a legal thing. So, and you made a good point. We heard at an earlier meeting that, for some reason, the PA system in this room isn't picking us up on these microphones, so you're relying mostly on our ability or inability to project across the dais, so I apologize if you can't hear us, but we're also struggling with just the fundamental acoustics of this room. The good news is, sometime in the next
Future.
Yes.
Future.
There's going to be this beautiful, this beautiful new chambers that will have a PA system that everybody can hear. So I just beg you to bear in mind that we don't have a lot of control over that, and please try not to shout out in the middle of something, but happy to acknowledge if you raise your hand and you're having trouble hearing. And we'll do, we'll try to do better to get the voice out there. But anyway, apologize for that, that deficit of the room. All right. Any other comments on this application? Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission, based upon the findings presented herein, the applicant's testimony and the evidence in the record determine that events since the adoption of the 2003 master plan make the land use recommendation in that plan no longer relevant in accordance with Section 20-18A of the city code.
Second? It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. And now a motion, please, on the sketch plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission, based upon the findings presented herein, the applicant's testimony and the evidence in the record, recommend approval of the sketch plan SK-9497-2023 to the Mayor and City Council with no conditions.
Second? It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. All right. That takes us to our public hearing tonight. And I, Caroline, you, there you are. I think we're going to do two together, maybe? And it's just a public hearing, not a, not findings? Let me, let me let you come up and introduce us so we can be clear about what we're doing with these two applications.
Let me just pull it up, and then I will.
And while you're doing that, I'll at least read the title of the application, which is ASDP-9525-2023, Add Adult Medical Daycare Use to Existing Office Use and Revised Parking Chart for 700 Professional Drive in the MXD Mixed-Use Development Zone. This is an amendment to the schematic development plan. And if you'll clarify the process, please.
Sure.
Caroline, good evening. Presented from staff is Caroline Sidon. Thanks for, thanks for being here.
So we're going to hear both ASDP-9525-2023 and AFP-9535-2023 concurrently.
Okay.
One is an amendment to schematic development plan, and the other is an amendment to final site plan. We, staff believes that they can be reviewed concurrently and with final action tonight. There's no change to any of the site, just the change in use. So we feel comfortable that we can go through both
Okay.
at the same time. But the first one is a public hearing, so I will go through the public hearing process with it. This is a public hearing on amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-9525-2023. The applicant, 700 Professional LLC, submitted the application on March 17, 2023. The applicant is requesting to add adult medical daycare and medical office to the existing office use within the existing building at 700 Professional Drive. You can see the, on the aerial, the outline of the property at 700 Professional is outlined in blue. It is located, located east of Interstate I-370, south of Professional Drive, and north of Watkins Mill Road. And directly adjacent to the north of the property is the Spectrum Development and Paramount Park Drive. The subject property is approximately 8.9 acres with an existing two-story office building, which was previously home to the Humane Society of the United States. Property was initially developed under the I-3 Industrial Office Park Zone, but was comprehensively rezoned to MXD in 1997 as part of Comprehensive Map Amendment Application Z-285. Subsequent to the rezoning, the site plan, the site received two sketch plan approvals, Z-306 in 2007, and then Z-3136-2013 in 2013. And that sketch plan is the current sketch plan, includes two development options. Option one is for a corporate campus, which permits up to 342,500 square feet of commercial uses. And option two permits up to 300,000 square feet of commercial use and up to 300 dwelling units, but also provides for an all-commercial option up to 342,500 square feet if no residential is developed. The proposed adult daycare use is listed as an allowed use under both of these sketch plan options. Because this application proposes no physical changes to the site, the most recent site plan S-657A will serve as the existing schematic development plan, which is to be amended. The application comes before the Planning Commission as a public hearing pursuant to Section 24, 198(c) of the city code. During a courtesy review that was presented to the Mayor and City Council on April 3, 2023, the council deemed the application to have minor impact and directed the Planning Commission to hold the public hearing and make the final decision on the amendment. The hearing was duly advertised in April 13 and April 20, 2023 issues at The Washington Post on the city website, and the property was properly posted, posted with signage. Notices to the surrounding property owners were also distributed on April 13, 2023. At the present time, there are 13 exhibits in the record file, and all exhibits are referenced in the staff report. All of the individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting, on the city's web page, or at the Planning and Code Administration office during regular business hours. Any objections to any exhibits should be noted prior to the closing of the record. Otherwise, the exhibits will be deemed received into evidence. And here tonight to present the application and to answer any questions is Stuart Barr of Lurch, Early &amp; Brewer, and Mr. Kim is here from World Shine, who is the applicant, the new property owner and applicant.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Caroline. I'm Stuart Barr with the law firm Lurch, Early &amp; Brewer in Bethesda. Our firm represents World Shine, the applicant. There are various LLCs and other business entities involved in the ownership, but World Shine is the operator. And with me this evening is Mr. Keely Lee of World Shine, the owner. And also in the audience, we have Becky Ja from World Shine, and Kevin Wang from Indesco is our civil engineer and transportation consultant. So that's our team this evening, and all of us are happy to answer any questions. I'm going to be relatively concise tonight, number one, because you have a full house, number two, because this, as Caroline said, this is a fairly straightforward proposal, no physical changes to the property are proposed, no exterior changes. It's all interior modifications to reuse the existing building for the proposed uses. So of course, if, if the Planning Commission has any questions or needs us to elaborate on anything, we're happy to do that. But with that, World Shine did close on the purchase of the property recently, so it does own the property of 700 Professional Drive. Formerly, it was the Humane Society of the United States. If you're not familiar with World Shine's business, World Shine is a senior care management company, and one of the ways, one of the most important ways it provides care to seniors is through its adult medical daycare facilities. And I have to say on a personal note that adult medical daycare is not a use that we frequently work on with development applications, so I was curious to learn more about World Shine's operations. So what I did is I took a tour of World Shine's current Germantown facility. World Shine has three locations, one of which is in Germantown. And I encourage anyone who's interested in learning more about adult medical daycare to do the same, to take a tour. It is absolutely a heartwarming experience. When I went into the facility, the seniors who are there for those services are, they are active, they're engaged, they are interacting with each other, they are thriving in that environment. And my takeaway was that it's a very important service that World Shine provides to the seniors. And I don't have any data to support this, but I'm certain that the seniors who receive those services live longer lives, more happier, healthier lives, and certainly more fulfilling lives. So it was really quite an important experience. So I'll just run through some slides very quickly to further elaborate on the operations. But as, as I mentioned, World Shine has three locations, one in Germantown, one in Beltsville, one in Frederick. And World Shine has operated those facilities for several years very successfully. There's really a significant demand for the services, and World Shine is very excited to bring one of its facilities to this property. So one of the important components is the nursing services, some of which are listed here. I'll run through these slides pretty quickly. But basically, the operation involves the shuttle vans for World Shine picking up the seniors in the morning from their homes, taking them to the facility during the day, and then dropping them back off in the afternoon. And so they spend the day, but they're also transportation services to other events or shopping, if need be. There are, there's a full range of activities that are available, and so And, and so many seniors engage in games or physical activities. There's a lot of music and art oriented, really anything you could ask for. There's a huge variety. This is an example of a monthly schedule, and that changes, and there's, there's always an opportunity to get involved in a variety of things. So there, there are dining services, breakfast, a morning snack, and lunch are always provided at the facilities and are healthy and well-balanced. This is just an example of some of the offerings for that. And then social work is obviously a very important component of the services, making sure that all the, the seniors are, are provided adequate social services, social work services. These are just some photos of one of the facilities that World Shine operates. And then these are some of the examples of the types of seniors that may, may, or do get services from World Shine and, or may need to do that. So testimonials is our final page here. But hopefully that gives you a concise summary of the operational characteristics of what we're proposing on this site. There are two levels to the existing building. The lower level is the level that we're proposing to convert from office that the Humane Society used to the adult medical daycare. And then the upper level will still be office, but more with a medical office component. So that's the proposed change of use. So again, World Shine is, is very excited to bring these services to the city. The idea is to relocate the Germantown facility to the 700 Professional Drive site, and we are really enthusiastic about the benefit to the senior population in the city, the job creation from the medical office use, and we think there are significant benefits to the city with this proposal. Just very quickly, some of the property characteristics Caroline went through. It's great location for World Shine, given the proximity to 270 and Watkins Mill. Surrounding uses are all compatible with this, these proposed uses, and plenty of parking. We looked at traffic and all the other items that we needed to analyze, and everything looks great for, for these proposed uses. Again, only interior modifications, no proposed exterior physical changes. At this time, we'll, in the future, World Shine may look at opportunities to, to do further development on the site, but this phase one just involves reusing the existing, existing building. Won't go through the entitlement history in detail, but all the master plan compliance, adequate public facility, facility compliance, no concerns there. We analyze all that in our statement, and the staff report does a great job of that. There's full compatibility, both with these uses, they're very complementary, and also exterior compatibility with the surrounding uses. So, and I'm like, the, the findings hopefully are pretty straightforward for you all. Won't go through those individually, but again, just to summarize, this is a great opportunity both for World Shine, and we think the city, to bring these important uses to, to the city. And we agree with the process that the planning department laid out with, with hopefully an approval this evening, if you're inclined, and so that we can start the interior modifications as soon as possible and operate the uses, get the building and the adult medical daycare open as soon as possible. So happy to take questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Any questions? I have a technical question, Caroline. So this is zone MXD. And the use is the thing we're looking at tonight. Because the original sketch plan or SDP didn't include something like this, is that...
The sketch plan, the sketch plan does include a map, adult, it includes, it just says daycare. It's just that this, we need an amendment to a schematic, we need a schematic development plan approved before we can approve an, an AFP for it. And that, because there is no schematic development plan, because it was approved, the final site plan was approved under the I-III zone, this kind of gets at getting a, a schematic development plan in place in the MXD zone before it can get an amendment to final plan.
Okay.
So this just, this is in compliance with the sketch, the current sketch plan.
Okay. So, yeah, okay, makes sense. All right. Any questions?
She answered my question.
All right. All right, so we have a public hearing. We're going to do this hybrid as we've been doing. We'll, we'll invite people in the audience who want to speak on this, as well as those online. For those that are online, tech team, would you please play the, the little intro video?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raised hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Great, thanks. And to be clear, this is just for the adult medical daycare application. We'll have that video and, and public hearing on the, the next application a little bit later on the meeting. All right, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? All right. I see, see nobody jumping up. And I'm looking, tech team, I'm looking at the online folks, and it doesn't look like any hands are up there either. So Caroline, what's your recommendation?
So if, if you decide to take final action tonight, it would actually require three different motions. One would be to close the record on ASDP 9525-2023. And then I'll read the two staff recommendations. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the applicant's testimony, the staff report findings and recommendation, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP 9525-2023, and adopt the resolution finding it in compliance with section 24-160G7B. And I will mention there is, exhibit number 13 is a draft resolution of approval for that. And then the second recommendation is that staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant AFP 9535-2023, finding it in compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city code.
Okay. And that takes care of, that third motion would take care of our site plan, our first site plan agenda item?
Correct.
Right, yeah, okay. Very good. All right, any questions, concerns?
No, no conditions at all?
No conditions. It's, it's...
I'm sad. You're sad.
No, you're not sad. No need.
It's, it's all existing, so there's really nothing to change.
All right. Lloyd, it looks like you were going to say something.
I was just going to say, we're very fortunate in the city to be able to utilize a building that has been vacated and repurposed for something that's really unique, actually, and look forward to approval of this, this plan.
I, I think this is a great reuse. There is a need for this kind of facility as our population ages, and this is, I think this is a great, an excellent thing to, to add to the city.
I think Surgeon General just declared it an emergency, right? It begin with, you know, weight and activity and heart disease, and sorry, I should speak up, right? So the, but, you know, I think that Surgeon General and some other directions from the AMA and others, that any of these facilities are a wonderful substitution for office in my mind. Today's environment.
Okay. I, I think you have resounding endorsement for moving this forward.
Yeah, I would just add, Mr. Chair, sorry, is that I think you've got quite a bit of site that's not built on, right? So there's, you know, a few, few flat areas, not a lot, but a few flat areas on the site. And I would encourage you to come up with some great ideas for what your residents might want to use those spaces for and come back to us. It would be, we'd love to see those improvements as well, so.
Could, could a pickleball court be fired?
Pickleball!
We don't use that word.
What's that?
We don't use that word.
We don't?
No, I guess we do, I don't know.
All right, very good. So we have three motions to get through. First is the closing of the record. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission close the record for application ASDP 9525-2023, and proceed with the final action.
Second? So moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up is the motion for the SDP.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the applicant's testimony, the staff report findings and recommendations, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-9525-2023, and adopt the resolution finding it in compliance with sections 24-160G.7, excuse me, yeah, B of the city code.
Second? Moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. And then on to the site plan.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report findings and recommendation, grant AFP 9535-2023, finding it in compliance with section 24-170 and 24-172A of the city code.
Second? So moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. That takes us to our next site plan agenda item tonight, which is SP-9149-2021, construction of two multifamily buildings at 91113 and 15 Park Avenue and 201 Brooks Avenue in the CBD Central Business District Zone. And this is for concept site plan. Mr. Chair? Yes. Presented from staff will be Chris Berger. And we do have a couple of pre, pre-somethings here before we start.
I'd just like to state for the record that my family owns property in the historic district neighborhood, not, you know, not right adjacent to the site, but not far from the site, but that will have no bearing on my evaluation this evening.
Should I mention I live on the other side of, of Old Town?
I don't know, maybe being a resident in the city.
Oh, that's right. We all, I forgot.
Danny, did you have something?
I just want to identify, I did review the recording, so I believe I am capable of making an evaluation this evening.
All right, very good. This will be a public hearing tonight. We have, I think, a lot of interest in speaking on this, which is great. And so I'll just ask you for a little bit of indulgence as we get through our process, which can be a little bit laborious, and try to keep the spontaneous support or otherwise vocalizations down as much as possible, so we can, we can proceed based on our, our rules of procedure and make sure we keep this orderly and fair for everybody involved. Chris Berger, presenting from staff, would you take it away, please?
Good evening. This is a continuation of concept site plan SP 9149-2021, which was deferred by the planning commission at its December 7th, 2022 meeting, to give the applicant the opportunity to meet with the community and alter the plans. The applicant, Harris Design and Construction, and SMBW Architecture and Interior Design, proposes the construction of two multifamily buildings consisting of 151 units on 1.65 acres at 91113 and 15 Park Avenue and 201, 201 Brooks Avenue in the CBD, the Central Business District Zone. The application comes before the planning commission in conformance with section 24-168 of the city code, which requires planning commission approval of a site development plan before construction of a building or a structure. Building A at the southeast corner of Brooks and Park Avenue will consolidate 15 Park and 201 Brooks Avenues. It will have 69 units and stand four stories tall with the surface parking lot behind it. And Building B will consolidate 9 and 11 Park Avenue with the empty lot at 13 Park Avenue. It will have 82 units and stand four stories tall with a partially below ground parking garage integrated into the building. An existing city-owned alley between the two proposed buildings will be improved within the project area to a 31-foot wide commercial service road. That alley is intended to eventually loop around the project area and connect to the back of the commercial properties along North Stomach Avenue. So land will be dedicated along the entirety of that alley. Since the packet was posted on Friday, nine additional exhibits have been added to the record. These are exhibits 115 through 124. And the applicant will now go over to the changes to the plan since the December 7th planning commission meeting. But joining us tonight, we have Harris Sediki of Harris Design and Construction, and Lisa Clark of SMBW. And I'll add that my colleague, Public Works Engineering Services Division Chief Brian Fields is also here if you have any questions related to traffic.
All right. Take it away.
Hello. My name is Lisa Clark, and I'm with SMBW, the architect for her firm, working on this project. This project is at the intersection of Park and Brooks, and it consists of two buildings, as Chris mentioned, oops, I'm sorry. Both four stories now with a total of 151 units. There will be parking on the ground floor of each of these buildings with access from the commercial service road. And additionally, Building B will have one level of below grade parking. Ground floor apartments along Park and Brooks Avenue will shield the parking from view. In response to comments we heard at the December 7th planning commission meeting, we have made the following changes to the site plan of the Park and Brook, Brooks projects. We have reduced the height of Building B from five stories to four stories, the by right allowable height. With this change, we have reduced the unit count from 180 to 151 units. We have set the building back an additional two foot, eight feet from the curb to create a larger planned buffer. This area will be landscaped with small bushes and ground cover to soften the base of the building as it meets the ground. We have incorporated porches with railings at all ground floor units to create a feeling of community and connectedness. And we have added several community-oriented amenities to the project, including a community room, a dog wash area along the commercial service area, the service road where many neighbors walk their dogs today. Along Park Avenue, we have adjusted Building B, and that's the building on the top right, to be four stories, the by right allowable height. Based upon feedback we heard at the October 26th Historic District Commission meeting, we have incorporated pitch roofs in the both buildings to better integrate with the neighborhood and the architecture of the surrounding houses and apartments. Deep recesses in the facade allow for porches and balconies, and this rhythm of ins and outs breaks down the scale of the building to bring it closer to the feeling of the existing neighborhood. Additionally, we have set the top floor of each building back to further reduce the perceived mass of the building from the street. With the exception of the gable ends at Building A, the top floor of each building is set back a little over two feet along Brooks and Park, Brooks and the commercial service road. We have increased the window sill height at all ground floor units and lobbies to a minimum of 18 inches between the ground plane and the glazing. And we have more accurately represented the topography of the site to show the slope as it exists. The material palette of the proposed project will consist of brick, shingle siding, and stucco. The arrangement of these materials works to further break up the scale of the buildings. Brick, the fiber cement, fiber cement, shingle siding, and large windows along with the deep inset porches create a varied facade. This facade, the facade of this building incorporates features and characteristics of the Old Town District, including a clear language for the base, middle, and top of the building. Porches and awnings to create a sense of shelter and a substantive landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the building. The buildings have a clear and distinct language at the base, brick piers with soldier coarse headers to define the openings and covered patios, and a separate language at the top, shingle siding set back from the street with deep roof overhangs. These elements blend in the middle of the building to create a cohesive architecture. We've included these two site sections, the one on the left through Park Avenue and the one on the right through Brooks Avenue, to show how the proposed development relates to the buildings that are across the street. And as you can see, along Park and Avenue, the proposed development is about 26 feet taller than the, the buildings across the street. But when you look across Brooks Avenue, that's a lot more comparable in size. We're showing about a seven-foot differential between the four stories apart, four-story apartments right across Brooks Avenue and the four-story apartments proposed on the site. With that, I'll pass it over.
Thank you for your time. So when we came here at the December 7th meeting, the conclusion was that you guys asked us to go back, do some more community engagement, really listen to what people are saying, and then to come back incorporating some of those changes. And that's the reason we've taken five months now to come back here. Right after the December 7th meeting, we sent out invitations to the entire community for, we'd be holding a listening session where people could voice their concerns. This took place on January the 26th, thankfully hosted here in the city hall in the upstairs gallery room. The meeting was really well-attended. Thirty people showed up. And we also brought in a professional meeting facilitator, just to make sure that each person had the, you know, option to, you know, be fully heard, and also to have a sort of a structure that allows for a deeper level of engagement that's really possible in this type of a setting. The facilitator had a really sort of wonderful structure that allowed for all this to happen. Each individual was given three sticky notes and asked to list out their top three concerns about the project. Shortly thereafter, you had 90 sticky notes on a board, and you could see that there were some themes that were emerging. There were a lot of common overlap amongst people. And very quickly, the, the participants themselves were able to group them in, themselves into certain teams. Here, we are noting what those three teams were that they broke out into. One was a group concerned about the financial impacts. What was the impact of this development going to be on, on their housing values? That was, that was a concern that wasn't actually coming up as much in the December hearing, but, you know, it was interesting... coming up as much in the December hearing, but, you know, it was interesting to see this really pop up more. The second group was no surprise. This is the stuff that we heard a lot of in the December meeting, traffic, density and parking. And we're going to touch on that today and what we're doing about that. And then the last group was what we're calling general compatibility. In terms of what their findings were, the first group was the one that we were actually very naturally already aligned with. There seemed to be a belief that this is an affordable project. And we even had one person claiming they don't, that, you know, that she didn't want section eight housing here. So that was a concern that some people had articulated. The traffic density parking group, no surprises there. They want to make sure there's sufficient parking. They're worried about the added trips from residents here. And they were also worried about the increased load on adjacent streets that might occur. And then the community compatibility group sort of had a variety of concerns that Lisa has already addressed some of them, but we're going to go over them again, including green space, trees and just the aesthetics of the area. So first off, this idea that apartment buildings and multifamily housing in general depreciates the property of single-family homes is not actually accurate. First of all, I want to stress again that this is a market rate project, and that as part of an enterprise zone, there's actually not even an MPDU requirement here. So that's something I want to just state explicitly for the record, because there seemed to be a misunderstanding that had developed around what this project is. I'm not sure why, but that was a misunderstanding. Harvard conducted a study several years ago, and they did this because they found that any time an apartment building was being built near single-family homes, that the single-family homeowners were going out and protesting and were worried about their housing prices. And what they found, and I've quoted it from the study here, is that that's not the case. Apartments, you know, houses with apartments nearby enjoy a slightly higher appreciation rate than houses that don't, and that communities with multifamily dwellings have higher property values than other types of working communities. And if we think about that, that, to me, actually makes a lot of sense. When you have density, when you have multifamily homes come by, businesses thrive. Everybody nowadays wants walkable communities where you have amenities, restaurants and services close by. Density allows that to happen. When those businesses thrive and you have better quality of services that come in, the area itself becomes more desirable. And, yeah, single-family homes benefit disproportionately from that. So, you know, I think there's just a lot of fear about some of this that isn't based on data. And, yeah, I specifically want to reiterate today that this is a market rate project. The second group, working group, and I think this is where we're coming to the meat and potatoes of what happened in December. When we went back and we listened to recordings over and over again, traffic was the number one cited concern about this project. It was mentioned 10 times by 10 different people who came up to the podium and spoke. So first of all, what we did is we went back and we conducted a traffic analysis, even though that's, you know, not especially required at this point of the planning process. We wanted to go back and do that because it was a community concern. And there seemed to be a concern, and I'm sure the commissioners, you know, will maybe appreciate this, you know, some people said, hey, Park Avenue can't, you know, take 150 cars hitting it at the same time. And that's not how traffic works. People aren't gonna, you know, 150 cars aren't going to hit Park Avenue all at once. So the traffic analysis, once it was conducted, I'm just going to share the methodology with you just to be, you know, very transparent on how these things work. What the traffic consultants do is they back out traffic from existing uses. Right now, you have four business, commercial structures there with, I think there's an engineering services provider there. Previously, there's been a dentist. All of their employees, all of their clients generate trips. So they start by backing that out. Then they add in trips based on a multifamily level of usage. They also factor in the idea that we have currently five driveways that are being consolidated into one. That creates efficiencies from a traffic standpoint. It's highly unsafe and inefficient to have five, you know, businesses feeding from five separate driveways into Park Avenue. The consolidation into one driveway actually creates deficiencies. In addition to that, that driveway is going to be signaled with a stop sign. So there's a safety element there as well that we're going to pick up as part of this plan. So when you factor in the trips that are removed, the trips that are added in, and the elimination of the driveways and consolidate into one, this basically goes into certain traffic tables and formulas. And the end result was that they found that there is not a substantial impact, not enough of a substantial impact to actually do a full-blown traffic study. And so, you know, that is something that we are, it was a lot of time, it was a lot of effort. We're happy to put that to rest. The next item was density. Now, this is a pretty huge concession on our part where we're not excited to do it, but we're dropping the unit count from 180 units down to 151. And this lowers the overall density, but also, as Lisa shared, it reduces the height of the B building on Park Avenue from five stories to four. What we think is beneficial here is that this brings a project to a density level that is by right. We no longer require a height waiver from the city council. This is now in compliance with what's already in the master plan. So this is a concession to the community, but it's, it also makes the planning process kind of simpler all around. The last piece of this working group was the parking issue. And again, I want to reiterate that parking is not required in Old Town because it's part of the Central Business District Zone that we're in. However, we have kept all of our parking that we have currently while reducing the unit count, and that bumps our parking ratio from 1.01 up to 1.21. Now, I always find context is really important here. The last apartment project that you all approved was in 2018. It was at 1.18. So we have come in and exceeded that established benchmark. I think, I think, you know, I can throw numbers out all day, but, you know, that's a benchmark of, you know, what has worked and the community and the city has found is favorable in the past. We still believe this is way too much parking, personally. We don't have to look at too many apartment projects around here and see empty parking in a lot of those garages. We continue to believe market demand is closer to one vehicle per unit. At 151 units and 183 parking spots, we're confident we have, like, too much parking. I also want to stress here, there's an elephant in the room, which is that all of these parking ratios, all these traffic ratios are pre-COVID, in the sense that they're not taking into account that people work from home now. Most people aren't going back to work five days a week, and yet we're still going to comply with the pre-COVID ratios here because, to me, that's a very clean way of using established benchmarks. But the reality is that the world is different now than it was five years ago. That's just the reality. The third working group was focused on community compatibility. So this is where, you know, somebody voiced this concern that they said, you know, there's people in this, you know, who are going to be living here. How are they going to integrate with our community? And what we're saying is, look, when you're having your neighborhood association meeting, have it in our building, you know, use our community room. There's ways that we can facilitate sort of just interweaving these communities together more closely. We're also providing access to the fitness center and pool for local residents. There was a question, hey, what is this doing for us? There's some amenities that will be available to folks in the community. And this is private property currently. And so, you know, when people, in the listening session, people shared, okay, well, you know, I like to walk my dog by there. You know, it's private property, so that's pretty much all the only purpose it has for the local residents at the moment. So we've spent actually some architecture and engineering time to create a dog wash station that can be accessed externally for local community members. So those are some items that we've added in. There are a few other community items and requests from the compatibility group that Lisa, you can take over here.
So one item that we heard come up a few times was the idea of more green space and a bigger buffer between the street and the building itself. And so we've added about two and a half, just over two and a half feet of buffer between the sidewalk and the building. And that's in addition to a six-foot planted strip between the street and the sidewalk, and then a six-foot sidewalk along Park Avenue. So that brings the total to something 16 to 18 feet, which is comparable to what's going on right across the street on Brooks Avenue. Additionally, we've added many new trees to the project. We are going to be taking some down due to construction, but we will be adding street trees all along Park Avenue, planted between the sidewalk and the street on that planted strip. These are going to shade the sidewalk, create a safer, more pleasant pedestrian experience along Park Avenue, where currently no sidewalk exists today. And then lastly, the sidewalks, which I've touched on, so again, we'll have six-foot wide sidewalks on Park, Brooks and the commercial service road. Currently, no sidewalk exists on this side of Park Avenue. And additionally, we will be incorporating stormwater management strategies that include, sorry, this project is designed to meet the stormwater management regulations set by the State of Maryland and the City of Gaithersburg by providing environmental site design to the maximum extent practical. And the stormwater concept has been reviewed and approved by the City of Gaithersburg Department of Public Works, Public Works, Move Forward. And this project is designed to provide four stormwater management facilities that are called microbioretention planter boxes. And each microbioretention planter box will be planted with shrubs and smaller trees to meet the landscaping requirements. This is a fairly modern approach, and it's going to help us treat and store stormwater, slow and treat stormwater onsite.
We went back out and we engaged the community further after the listening session, and we had tremendous support for the project, which hopefully you'll hear about tonight. Residents, the thing that we heard the most was, we need more housing in the area and we need housing that's less dated. And we kept hearing that over and over again. Businesses kept saying, we need more residents here for our businesses to thrive. The city hasn't done enough on its promises of bringing more people here. And we also got tremendous support from civic, nonprofit and other smart growth groups. A lot of people took note of what happened in December and were, you know, very supportive of this project and where it's headed. As evidence of that, the next slide is a list of businesses. These are mainly located on Summit and Diamond Avenue, who have written letters in support of this project. I'm going to read them off alphabetically because some of them couldn't be here as they worked late into the evening. Aurelius Lawn and Spa, Casa Escobar Insurance, Cho's Auto Service, Countrywide Property Management, Fruity Respados, Gaithersburg Supermarket, Guata Bakery, Los Amigos Restaurant, Manhattan Pizza and Pasta, Mary Dominique Angel Hair, McCormick Paints, Miniman Press, Morazon Grocery, Newell Counseling, Old Town Antiques, Pupusaria Anita, Rincon Peruano, Starvin Marvin, The Vape Spot, Total Environmental Concepts, and Viajes Samser and Tours. Now, I'm sure most of you guys are familiar with these. They're really close to this project and very close to this facility here as well. I'd be surprised if you guys weren't patrons to most of these places. And they're highly supportive. There's 21 of them here, unique businesses that are, you know, really hoping that this goes through. I want to kind of, not quite close yet, but really list out all the things that have changed here. And again, the submission in December was compliant. It has staff approval. We had some community challenges. These are all of the things that have changed since then. We're not even talking about what was, you know, in compliance before December. These are, again, reiterating market rate units. We've reduced the unit count and the density. We've removed one story from the B building, which solves the issue of massing. We're adding 400 feet of sidewalk in as part of this project, but we've also widened that sidewalk now with more trees. There are more trees now in public areas as part of this plan than there are currently on site for the benefit of the community. There is an increase in green space since the last submission. There are more plantings. We've increased the parking ratio to what is higher than previously approved buildings. We've conducted a traffic impact analysis that shows that there's no substantial traffic impact. We have done a community access program to integrate the neighborhood better and made access to certain amenities. The neighborhood compatibility is more from an architectural standpoint. Stormwater requirements are now, we are, what we have is superior to what is currently in place and in compliance with all requirements. We have shown tremendous community support. And in the interest of intellectual honesty, I want to call out two things that we are not doing that the listening session asked for. We are not keeping the existing structures in place. That would be tantamount to killing the project. And we are not doing a substantial decrease in unit numbers. We have dropped from 180 to 151. I had a request that we drop down to 30 units. That is not something that we can do. On that note, I want to kind of close with some context. A lot of times, we can, you know, rightfully get into the weeds, but context, I find, is always really important, particularly as it pertains to density, because that's something that, you know, some neighbors seem to want, like, something very small. In 1997, these parcels that we're talking about were designated as part of a newly created Central Business District. And that plan basically said, and I'm reading from it, to permit an increase in the density and intensity of use. That was 1997. In 2003, the city launched a new process to create a new master plan, which, you know, took into account public opinion. And in that plan, which culminated in 2005, it was two- to three-year process, these were designated as part of Sector 4. And the priority for Sector 4 was to bring more density to the city. 201 Brooks, which is just one of the five parcels that we've assembled in this 1.65 acre area, was by itself designated for 90 units. So I just want to repeat that. 201 Brooks by itself, to say nothing of the other four units, was designated for 90 units. Furthermore, in 2007, these parcels were designated as part of an enterprise zone, and those extended further incentives for multifamily housing units. This was extended again in 2017 for another 10 years into 2027. So context is really important. Density is really important. I just want to say that we are in the middle of a housing crisis. This is a topic that's coming up in the city and all over the county. We think our project goes a long way towards helping countless people who will be renting here, who can't speak. But, you know, we hope this moves the needle in the right direction to a degree. And I will stop there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I do want to clarify a couple of points, and then we'll get to questions, and then obviously we'll invite the public to speak. One of the things you said, and you termed, you know, I think you were addressing the height of the buildings and the unit count, and you used the phrase "by right." There really isn't a by right. What you don't have to do is to get a waiver for the additional height. In the CBD zone, everything is on the table for discussion. So just to be clear, there is no concession. I mean, there is a project that needs to be built to some level of compatibility based on the criteria we're going to apply to this, and it's not a by-right zone, just to make that clear to everybody else here.
That's fair. Yeah, I meant to say there's no waiver required for height. Yep.
I also wanted to invite you to be, maybe clarify, when you did your sort of preliminary traffic study, trip generation study, the data that's used to generate the numbers that then say there is this impact from, I just, I want you to be clear about where that data came from. Not the counts, per se, but what you assume and how you assume it.
I believe there's, Lisa, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I think that would be a good question for Brian Fields.
Okay.
Can come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Brian Fields, Engineering Services Division Chief. Good to be with you tonight.
Thanks for being here.
The data, well, I think it'd be helpful, if the commission allows, to just give you the full staff perspective on traffic. We can cover it all probably in just a few minutes here.
Let's get it out there now, because that's a major concern.
I think you heard from the applicant, but I'd like you to hear from our perspective on all traffic issues. As far as, we do have concerns about this project. It's a very critical area in the city. There are a number of traffic issues, not just in the immediate vicinity of this project, but in the surrounding area. And we saw this project and the density, we had concerns. So what we required upfront was what we call a traffic statement. And that includes a number of items in your agenda packet. The first is trip generation for the proposed project, and then it's also trip generation for the existing use that they get credit for, that he alluded to. Those numbers come from the ITE Trip Generation Manual, Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's the national standard for trip generation based on a number of historical studies. So those numbers are applied based on an assumed maximum usage or occupancy for both of those, both proposed and the existing. So what we also required in that traffic statement was to compare the net at the peak hour of the two. And that does show that there is indeed an increase in traffic with this product, with this project. It would be noticeable, but I would say it's not something that would be significant in terms of the numeric traffic numbers. Specifically, you know, they show a net increase of 22 a.m. peak hour trips and a net increase of 17 p.m. peak hour trips. of 17 p.m. peak hour trips. That on streets with over 1,000 vehicles per day is not significant. The one concern is that the actual increase that people will see, and a lot of these folks behind me, will be quite a bit higher than that at first. And that's because those offices are not fully occupied, as is the case of many offices throughout the country right now. So even though numerically, we use a theoretical maximum, what they'll see initially, if the apartments are completely full, would be a higher number, at least initially. We also looked at the site trip distribution. So this is kind of where are those vehicles going out of the apartment building? And two critical locations here. One is the driveway coming immediately out of this project, and the second would be the Park and Brooks intersection. So what we've required, based on that traffic statement, is a complete analysis of all modes at the Park and Brooks intersection. And that would come to us at the next submittal. That would include vehicles, bicyclists, pedestrians, and just a complete level of service review to see what improvements may be needed. So it's not a full-blown traffic study. We felt like that intersection was critical. In addition, based on our own field observations, we have concerns about the current conditions on Park and Brooks, whether there's a project there or not. We observed some high speeds on the approaches to that always stops, some definite roll-throughs, some safety concerns for the current residents, as well as the potential future residents. So we are collecting five-day volume and speed counts on both of those roads to get an idea of what the conditions are, and then they may be candidates for our own traffic calming or other measures of improvements. So we do have concerns. We do have a number of other projects in that area that I can expand on, maybe... I know we have a lot to get to tonight, but looking at Summit Avenue, we're looking at Russell Avenue improvements. We know it's a critical area, and we've looked very carefully at this project, so I'll leave it there.
And not to jump too far ahead, but if your findings warrant, and I'm not using that term in traffic language, but if it does demand some kind of mitigation at that intersection or even, you know, a block or two away because of the natural kind of outlook, there's both the opportunity to include some of that in this project, as well as capital projects that the city might take on, based on what you find. Is that fair?
Potentially. Depends on the nature of it, how much their project would be considered responsible for the new impact. It's something we could look at.
Good. Okay.
Can I ask a traffic-related question? I was... You know, the trip generation that they included in their traffic statement, you know, we've had the benefit tonight of having an application earlier that had a similar traffic study for a similar multifamily project, and it's about, I don't know, four or five miles away. And the delta in traffic counts per unit, I was doing scratch paper math while we were looking at it, and, you know, if we were to apply the same rates that were used at tonight's earlier application, we'd have between 47 and 56 a.m. and between 65 and 72 p.m. peak trips. So can you explain what the delta is in the way that these two multifamily projects were looked at that resulted in such drastic differences in numbers?
We haven't seen that study yet, at least I haven't in my office. I know there's a couple of factors here that maybe didn't apply to that. So again, without having the benefit of that study, this, by the number of units, falls under what's called mid-rise category. I don't know where the other one fell.
Mid-rise.
And then it's also, by location being proximate to commuter rail, there is a slight discount on the trip generation because of that nature of it. There's many different categories, so that's probably the difference that you're seeing.
I guess that's... Without getting too far into discussion, and we can come back to this later, I guess that's my one concern. Their statement here that they're taking urban setting deductions as well as commuter rail deductions, I didn't feel like paying for the ITE handbook myself to dive into it. But I think we need to look hard at whether those step downs in trip generation are actually appropriate for the site. This is not downtown Bethesda, you know, commuter rail makes sense, but, you know, if we're taking major deductions for a quote-unquote "urban site," where you assume people are walking to work and walking to everything and are close to employment, that's probably not appropriate here. So if that's the determination between whether the applicant's responsible for a full-blown traffic study or not, because my understanding is we're sort of on the bubble there, I think we need to take a closer look at that.
We'll go ahead and take another look and look at that other project, see what factors, make sure we're consistent.
Great point. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant's team or staff? All right, we're going to go to public hearing now. To get set up for this, let me ask the tech team to play the... Play the video again for folks that are trying to dial in or log in from the online versions meeting.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, very good. Thanks. All right, we'll start with the folks in person. Please, you can line up, step up to the podium. We're going to take three minutes per statement. I have a timer running. When you're at 30 seconds, a little warning light will go on. And Chris, am I forgetting something you're looking at? Okay. At 30 seconds, a light will go on to warn you that you're coming up on your time, and then at three minutes, it will beep, and that will be it. And anything you have that you didn't have a chance to say, you're certainly welcome to submit in writing, and it will be entered into the record. To start, I'd like to ask you to introduce yourself by name and address, if you're comfortable. If you're not comfortable giving your address, then just neighborhood or area would be fine. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Mike English. I actually live in downtown Silver Spring. And, you know, just to cut to the chase, I know some may be wondering why I feel the need to weigh in on this, and it comes down to the fact that, you know, I've lived in downtown Silver Spring for about 10 years, and every building I've lived in has been approved and, in most cases, built before I lived there and had a chance to weigh in on it. And, you know, I've become, in the last four years or so, increasingly involved in housing, advocacy, both affordable market rate and otherwise, and frankly, increasingly frustrated by the housing crisis. You can always find reasons not to do something, so increasingly, I feel the need to speak up on, you know, just projects like this that I think are greatly needed. You know, basically, it comes down to, if you only defer to, you know, what will not offend existing residents at all, that's a very good way, even with the best of intentions. Most people are coming by this earnestly. There's always a reason you can find to oppose something. There's always a reason something can make something a little more inconvenient. And it's pretty easy to see it as the residents as the little person and, you know, developer coming in. And I'd encourage everyone to think about the residents that aren't here yet, that can't speak up for it, that, you know, there are people that are going to be living in these homes that'll be just as much residents as people here now. And they, just by the nature of how these things work, don't have a voice here yet. I've, you know, I've reviewed the plan. I've looked at some of the submitted testimony. I've looked at concessions. I'm frankly skeptical that they will be enough to satisfy critics. I go to a lot of these, and they almost never are. But I think it shows a good faith effort by the developer to, you know, meet the community halfway and to try to find, you know, a middle ground here. Your city, our county, and the entire region is facing a housing crisis. I know many people being priced out. You know, market-rate housing doesn't do all its job on its own. I push for rent stabilization. I push for affordable housing. I push for all these things. But the vast majority of people in the county, in the country, and in this room, I would hazard a guess, live in market-rate housing. I know I do. I also know that I couldn't afford to buy a house pretty much anywhere in the county. I could afford my 622-square-foot condo I live in now and one-bedroom apartments before that. And, you know, it's harder to buy a home now than it used to be. To try to sum up, I mean, again, I don't... There's no villains in this story. People mean well for the community. They want to do what's best. But it's very easy to unintentionally, you know, make its... It's very easy to push people out when you don't mean to, and it can feel good to feel angry. It can feel good to feel aggrieved, but it's not helping us get through this housing crisis. And, you know, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for taking the time to visit us here in Gaithersburg.
Absolutely.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dan Reed. I'm the Regional Policy Director for Greater Beard at Washington. We are a regional nonprofit that works to advance racial, economic, and environmental justice in land use, transportation, and housing throughout the D.C. area. I'm Montgomery County resident. I grew up here, and we support this proposed development. You know, we don't normally take positions on individual projects, but we recognize the significance of this development, both for the City of Gaithersburg and for the county. As my friend Mike noted, we have a local, regional, and national housing shortage. Home prices are rising, and people are losing the chance to live here or stay here or contribute to this community. Many of my friends that grew up in Montgomery County can't live here anymore, can't live here anymore because they can't afford it. And every household who gets priced out is a loss. You know, this site is a walkable downtown, just a couple of blocks from schools, shopping, parks, and the Mark station. It's not downtown Bethesda, but it's also not Clarksburg. It's a walkable neighborhood. This is a great place for homes. It'll bring more foot traffic to local businesses, grow the tax base, help our carbon footprint, reduce suburban sprawl, and give people who can't, don't, or won't drive more housing options. That's a good thing. I should also note that for a decade, I worked as a transportation planner. I have sat in this room as a consultant on projects. And the ITE Transportation Handbook is a useful resource. A lot of communities use it to do parking and traffic estimates. It should be taken with a grain of salt. The examples in this guide are often very limited, right? The trips, it says, for a mid-rise building could be from one example in one city 30 years ago. That's actually how it works. I've worked on real-life traffic studies here in the D.C. area in suburban and urban locations, and by and large, we actually find lower parking usage and lower trip generation rates for new development. And one of the biggest indicators of how much car usage development is going to bring is generally how close it is to stuff, right? So I actually feel like this project may not be as bad as people say it is. I think it will be good for Gaithersburg. I think it'll be good for the county. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Please. Did you bring a chart or something?
Oh, I did.
Okay.
We'll share in a moment. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Schuler, and I'm here tonight to share a story with you related to this last agenda item, specifically the traffic. I know you've heard a lot about it, but this is a little bit of a different take. I actually do live here in Old Town. I have for 25 years on Walker Avenue. And I want to share a story with you. And it's a story of a boy. This boy. Y'all can see this boy. He grew up in Old Town, too. He played baseball here. He rode his bike here. He went to school here, attended church here, fell in love here, all within a half-mile of Park and Brooks. And six years ago... I'll share this with you, and you can pass it around if you'd like. Six years ago...
Please stay on the mic when you speak so we can capture it.
Sure. Six years ago, he nearly died here at Parks and Brook because you already have a hot mess here in traffic. Regardless of what anybody wants to put here, this boy nearly died. And that's because a driver, as they do every day at Park and Brooks, swooped into the already many high-density apartments you have at Brooks and Park and hit him while he was riding his bicycle home for baseball practice. Was it that the driver just couldn't see around all the cars that were already parked and double-parked because although we want to think it's not a parking issue, oh, it is? The M.T.s arrived and raced my son Van, who that is, to the shock-trauma unit at Suburban. My husband, my daughter, myself watched in horror at Suburban while the priest gave him last rites because his chances of surviving the traumatic brain injury he suffered at Parks and Brook were less than 50% of survival. He underwent hours of surgery to have almost half of his skull removed. So if you actually looked at the poster, on the right side is his true skull with half of it missing. In an instant, Van went from college-recruited baseball athlete with a scholarship to a kid fighting for his life, all due to poor planning. And shame, shame, shame what I saw up there, what was approved, because you may think Park Avenue is part of the business district, but it's not. So I hear my boop. I'm sorry. I thought I could speak faster.
Thirty seconds.
He won the fight. He's alive. It cost four brain surgeries. He has a titanium plate in his head, two years of physical therapy, and, most important, lost baseball scholarship, possibly a pro career, and even a change in college major because the most significant skill he lost was the one you really need to be. You may appreciate this Lisa, an architect. I have more to say, but I won't. I'm just going to say, there is a lot of housing coming in here. So what anybody else has said before me, there's a lot of public housing apartments coming in. My dad lives right here in the neighborhood in an apartment, so I'm pro apartment, just not on what's really a residential street.
Okay, thank you. That's three minutes.
Hi, guys. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. My name is Patrick Stoll. I live on Highland Avenue. Standing here tonight for the second time in five months to state my unfortunate opposition to the current development plan, I'm not against development. I'm against a specific version of the specific development, which remains, despite grave concerns, incompatible with the site, in my opinion. I wish I could stand here and say that this revised plan took all of the suggestions from the community, and that resulted in a plan that is, in the words of my friend Harris Tadiki, quote, "something that everyone can at least be okay with." Unfortunately, despite the community's efforts, that does not appear to be the case, in my opinion. After the meeting in December, the community met with the developers' children at a moderated feedback workshop. We provided concrete, specific, constructive feedback and suggestions, townhomes, condos, three-floor buildings, 75 units. We said 30 because 180 was so high, we felt we had to say 30 to get it to an acceptable number. I spoke with Harris, and I spoke with Mona for over an hour. I laid out what we were concerned about and why. Initially, I was really encouraged. Then I got an email that said they would work to address our concerns but not sacrifice the density, so I'm disappointed in the revisions. I feel like we offered ideas and concerns in good faith, and though the developer may think they came in good faith, that the results kind of say differently. I spent a lot of time trying to forge a relationship here, including with the developer and city staff after the December meeting so that we can work together for the best possible solution. But a true agreement, compromise, and discussion can't be had on a one-way street. Every single solitary issue with the plan in December is still present now, parking, traffic, green space, safety, density. 150 is returning to the same number that the community opposed in 2021 before they bumped it up to 180. So in essence, they've taken our feedback and gone back to the original proposition. You can't address all the issues of parking and traffic and safety without the density issue. I understand you have a number of units you have to retain to make a profit, but I don't, we don't, we shouldn't care. It's not our responsibility nor the city's to make an investor whole. It's easy to make recommendations and proposals...
Thirty seconds.
...when you would be unaffected by the result of the project on a daily basis. It's easy for city planning and developers to do that. It's easy to go to businesses and say, "You'll make a lot of money," when you don't know that the affluent people you are trying to bring in will frequent the businesses. So thank you for your time. Every single issue is still here today. I'm asking you to reject it. They can start again. No more revisions. The public is not a nuisance that can just be put aside or ignored.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Yusuf Ahmed. I'm a recent transplant to the area from Cambridge, Massachusetts. I'll keep my remarks brief because I know the line is very long, and I want to be respectful to all of you.
Are you... You don't have to say your address, but are you in the city? Or what neighborhood are you from?
Not in Gaithersburg. We're looking in the area. The main reason we're looking here, we're out in Columbia. We're looking in the area because I need to commute into D.C. And I don't like driving. We have one car. My wife doesn't have a license, and we're looking in the area, but it's not really affordable. Even though I have a graduate degree from MIT, my wife has one from Harvard, it's really hard to afford housing in Montgomery County, especially if you work in the public sector, which we both do. I think the only thing I'll say here is, I think, one, it's very clear that Harris I think the only thing I'll say here is, I think, one, it's very clear that Harris and this team have taken a lot of considerations, like worked with moderation. But I think the kind of main thing I'll just address with the housing crisis is, not everyone's represented in this room. If we look at kind of who's speaking out against a project, mainly white, I'm assuming homeowners, I'm assuming mainly affluent. Gaithersburg is really diverse. There are a lot of families who can't be here, working class, have kids, screw significantly younger. And I think as you consider what to do with this proposal, I think, consider the voices that are not in this room who can't make it. My parents are both working class, same with my wife's. Her father was a taxi driver, and it's hard for them to make it to settings like this. And so I think speaking on their behalf for the folks who can't be here, who live in Gaithersburg, we need more housing. We need affordable housing. And I think this project's gone a long way, and really, again, trying to meet folks where they're at, you're not going to make everyone happy. But again, we need actors who can act in good faith. The previous speaker was very respectful, have a lot of respect for how he was engaging, but I also have a lot of respect for how Harris and that team are engaging. And for that reason, I think, I'd go ahead and approve this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir.
My name is Osman Ahmed. I live currently in Bethesda, Maryland. I'm born and raised in Montgomery County. And the story I want to tell is from about five years ago. So my wife was doing some schooling at Johns Hopkins, and we were looking to move south to this area because I work in Washington, D.C. I was taking the Mark train from Baltimore. As the previous speaker mentioned, we only have one car because I would just take the Mark train, and she would drive to school. And it was a very, very nice setup, and I think that's probably why the traffic studies and things like that, where you're near a Mark train, you're probably going to have less people with less cars. So that was certainly our situation, and we were looking to move down to this area. And my wife's one rule wherever we lived was, she wanted to live someplace like new and updated. We were looking around and didn't, yes, there is housing here, certainly, but there is not much new housing, at least that we found at that time. And so, you know, Commissioner Wessel, you mentioned Bethesda. That's where we stretched our money quite a bit, actually, at that time, to be able to get an apartment there. But the other thing I'd urge you to consider is that we ended up buying in Bethesda because we got our first apartment there, we settled down there. So I also think that thinking about this as a longer-term project and not just, you know, individual small things that might come up, but a longer-term investment in this area. My mosque is here. As I mentioned, I grew up coming here, and we would have loved to have lived here, and now we live in Bethesda. So I just thought that story might be informative as you're thinking about how to think about this project going forward. I do hope you consider it and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Manger, and I'm here tonight to support this revised site plan, Park Edition Multifamily Project. I've called Montgomery County home for over 20 years, first in Rockville.
I'm sorry, I've been in your time. Did you say, and I'm, Mr., are you, neighborhooded area where you're from?
I'm about to tell you.
Oh, okay. Well, please introduce yourself.
But I can answer your question if it doesn't eat up my three minutes. I live in Olney now. I first lived in Rockville, so I've lived around your community, but I've taken, my kids are now in college, and I've used your Parks and Recs and played, you know, you guys, you have an amazing city. You have to know that. And those of us who've lived in this county long enough use the amenities here even when we live around you. So right now, I live in Olney. It took me 15 minutes to drive here. But I'm here really as a county resident that's concerned, like some of the people here before me, with the lack of affordable housing, with the lack of investment in multifamily. I know this is a market-rate project, but market rate creates more affordable housing in our community, right? You guys probably know well that the county's established a goal of 41,000 new housing units by 2030, 75% of which are supposed to be in activity centers or near transit. The site for this multifamily project offers an opportunity for your city to be a leader in the county, right? The Gaithersburg City professionals have backed this. I think you should rely on your staff and listen to their recommendations and approve this project. And in my observation, the developer has worked earnestly to incorporate feedback. For me, the project being in line with your original plans, your Old Town Master Plan, you know, you've heard all the ways that it's adding amenities to the community, approving pedestrian access, you can go on and on, I won't reiterate. It's already in this area designated CBD Enterprise Opportunity Zone, and they've shared with you all the businesses that support the process. I'm here, I spent last spring into summer running to be on the county council. I lost. I probably wouldn't be here tonight if I'd won. But I talked to a lot of people in up county, and a lot of people I know want to see stuff like this happen, and that's why I decided to come out tonight. And one of the things that's just driving me crazy is a lot of this not-in-my-backyardism that we're allowing to drive investment in our community that we should be doing. I have two college-age children. It would be awesome if they could be renters in this community and live 15 minutes from my house. We need more multifamily projects like this in the county. And I also feel strongly that local businesses, developers, and investors who invest in our community in good faith, in good faith, should be able to develop their property when they comply with established zoning. I'm really sympathetic to those living by, but perhaps the time to voice opposition would have been when all of those planning processes were happening over the years. So, you know, if you purchase property after the plan was established, people should understand what the potential is for development where they're making an investment in their single-family home and not come in after the fact and try to stop progress from happening.
That's three minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Khalid Usmani. I originally moved to Gaithersburg in March of 2016, and today I'm here to express my
We'll be hurting, you know, we'll be, you know, continuing that non-diversity. That's ridiculous. Also, the gentleman that left, the one who was representing some kind of advocacy organization, he was talking about, yeah, maybe the numbers are down for the traffic because people walk here. People don't walk here. People don't walk to the grocery store in downtown Gaithersburg. Oh, my gosh, that would be great. We've, some of us have been wanting that for 30 years. I've been here 36 years. That's not the case. So as a 30-year retiree from the National Institutes of Health, I would like to see the transparency in these traffic studies. What we do at NIH now, before you get federal funding for a grant from NIH, is you have to show your data, your methods, and you have to make it transparent enough that someone else could run the same study and get the same answer. And that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see that kind of transparency so we really know what we'd be dealing with. Well, guess what? My six-year-old grandson, he could figure out that adding 150 cars to a neighborhood would increase the traffic volume by a significant amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Susan Searle, I live in the neighborhoods, I walked here tonight. This applicant does not care about my neighborhood beyond its ability to make them money. My neighbors have spent hours in council meetings, reading proposals, testifying, making suggestions, and especially attending a planning meeting on January 24th of this year, which at this point I fear was a colossal waste of sticky notes.
Okay, let me interrupt you right there for a second. So I want to be clear. We're going to give everybody an opportunity to speak. This is not, you know, a sideshow. I want to make sure that there, everybody has a fair time to make their points, that there is no yeses, nos, yays, boos, anything from the, from the audience while this is happening. Please, please, please provide a level of decorum that doesn't turn this into, turn this into a shouting match. I appreciate that. Thank you. Please continue.
As you stated earlier, the developer refuses to address the major problem with this project, which is the, that it is way too many units. I did a little math a minute ago on the 380 units on 14 acres over in the Nike missile site, and that's about 26 units an acre. And for, so for 1.7 acres, you arrive at about 45 units max for, for 1.7 acres over on Parks and Brook. Anyhow, this developer operates with gimmicks to make it appear as though they're working with us. For example, they, if you're here back in 2021 when this was originally proposed, it was at 150 units. It went up to 180 in December and it came back down to 150 to make it look like, oh, yeah, we took off a floor, we knocked it down 30 minutes, 30 units for you guys. Not the case. It's been that, it was that way to begin with. Stop sign, you're funneling five drives into one so that they can all hit the stop sign. If you have been on Russell Avenue at all, you see how well people pay attention to the stop signs. The community center, community room with the pool, we were promised that 20 years ago at Constitution Gardens, and that was yanked because they ultimately said, well, we can't, we can't cover you with liability, you can't cover non-residents for liability. So we did not, in fact, get the workout center and use of community space in their rooms. You can wash your dogs, where are all these dogs going to defecate? Well, I can tell you, it's going to be across the street in Amelia and Joan's yards. I didn't quite get the detail on why they didn't feel a traffic study was needed. I know that there was a little more explanation given later, but at that point, Harris started talking really fast and moved on to his next point. So I again think that it's ridiculous that we don't need any kind of trap to, to address traffic there. What they are proposing will completely upset the ecosystem of my neighborhood, putting extreme traffic pressure on the already difficult-to-navigate streets of Old Town and putting resident safety at risk. And contrary to what they contend that this project will promise for young professionals, it's going to bring down the quality of life for everyone with the, the added density. Present us with a plan that has no more than 40 units, with accompanying improvements to the neighborhood, and then we'll talk. I'm just so exhausted with continuing to address this and feel like I'm not being listened to whatsoever. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Will Osborne. I actually do live in this neighborhood on Maryland Avenue. The residents, if they, if this was built, they will leave their apartments, and if they're headed to north on 355, we'll floor it past the speed bump in my road and past my house up towards 355 to turn right, because it's, as they will learn, the best way to get there. And that's actually my, my concern mainly is traffic. So the ITE numbers, Philip, you nailed it, they give you a discount for rail. They don't specify whether that's metro or mark train. And classifying mark train as rail transit is just categorically wrong. Useful for what it does, but it's not the kind of thing that's going to diminish traffic by the same margins that being next to a metro station would do. So that's why those numbers are so different. It's a mischaracterization, and there's, there's another factor there. Because of the existing rail lines, getting in and out of that space is tricky. There's only certain ways you can go without getting bound up by the traffic that's waiting anytime there's a train that goes by. This is a key area to get a traffic study done, a real one, not some approximation based on the number of units and how many peak, and, and taking two liberties there. The first being reducing the number of trip counts by the existing units, which don't have the number of trips that they have allocated for them, and the second being categorizing mark as being near rail. Those are false assumptions, and it's going to, it's going to cause problems for the people that live in this neighborhood. And the traffic study is essential. I, you know, I will be wholeheartedly against this until we see a traffic study that actually shows me that, all right, we figured out where these people are going to go and how they're going to get there.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I don't know if I need to remove my-
You can leave it on if-
Okay. So I was, I live in Gaithersburg. I used to live in-
And your name, your name, please?
Oh, sorry. My name is Laura Alvarez Rojas. If, if some people were talking about minority, I meet all the minority standards. I'm a woman, I'm a middle-aged, close to being old, I'm Hispanic. I've been living in Gaithersburg since 1999. So I used to live in the apartments that are in that corner. I lived in those apartments for 20 years. I started after, just right at the pandemic, I started looking for a place to live. And I looked around, looked around, and I couldn't afford anything. Eventually I found my niche, which is in Gaithersburg. So I'm staying in Gaithersburg. When I started seeing all the displays, about 180 apartments, I'm like, where are they going to build them? I was shocked. And so eventually I took a look at the, the land, and I couldn't believe it. So I was like, in this tiny land, it's 180 apartments? I, I cannot see it. I cannot picture that to happen. I walk pretty much every single day around my neighborhood. And again, because I'm old, I have osteoporosis, so I need to walk every single day. It's a very peaceful neighborhood. One thing that I really appreciate is the oldie townie, oldie townie Gaithersburg, you know? So the, the flavor of the old neighborhood, the original town, is going to be lost if you approve this building of 180 or 151 apartments. People are also saying that they are looking for affordable places. They are, the rents around here are also crazy. So are these 151 apartments going to be affordable for people? I don't know. Where I live is very peaceful. I would like to, selfishly, I would like to keep the peacefulness in the neighborhood. Over the 20-some years that I've been living here, I can see the traffic changes. So if somebody comes and tells me that 181 or 151 apartments are, is not going to change that, that is not true. Are, are schools going to be able to afford the overcoming of students here? I don't know. So, you know, it's very, 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 very-
30 seconds.
Many things happening. So, sorry, I was not prepared. I just came here, but I just thought, why not? I should speak up. And another thing that I should say, I'm a statistician. I know about data, and if somebody needs to show the data and prove that all these resources and traffic and everything that has been mentioned here is, is double-checked. I'm a statistician, so I can just help doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Clark Day. I live in Old Town, and I also walked here. I looked at the exhibits for this submission tonight, and it seems that the, the authors fall into two categories. They're either for this, or they're against it. That's a big duh moment. But the people who are for it, they fall into two categories. It seems that whether they're entering things, you know, sending things in online, or whether they're here speaking, they fall into two categories. One is, they don't live anywhere near the project, and they will be not impacted at all, whether it's built or not. Or they're business owners within Gaithersburg, and they'll be impacted between nine and five Monday through Friday, and it'll potentially, you know, increase their livelihood. And then there's the people who are against it. And those who are against it stand to be impacted by this project seven days a week, 20, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And that's why we're, of those people, we are so vocal. I've got two problems with some of the numbers that they're throwing around. It really makes me distrust this developer even more. If they're telling us that there's 150 potential units, and there's going to be between 18 and 22 people leaving the building in the morning, is that all the people who are going to have jobs? I mean, how does that work? Are they going to, will all of them walk over to the, the train and go downtown? I don't think so. And the other numbers that I have trouble with is 25 or 27 units per acre across the street at Muddy Branch is profitable, and they have to have 108 units per acre in Old Town to be profitable. I can't get an explanation from anybody. I tried asking the council, and I got a bunch of lawries, and I can't seem to get an answer of why it's so much easier to be profitable over there, where I think they spent $12 million buying the property from the government. And over here, I don't think there was that much investment in the property, but they need five times the density to, to be happy. So I think that you all have probably close to 150, maybe 175 years' experience in the urban planning field, and I hope that you all will consider this pro, this application very carefully and keep everything in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I guess I'm representing a third category here of people speaking out, but I want to start off with, first of all, like applauding the city of Gaithersburg.
Would you say your name and where you're from, please?
My, my name is Merrick Wallach, and I'm from the community. I live in Montgomery County. I'm representing the third one. I want to start off with applauding the city of Gaithersburg for attracting this investment. It's very important, particularly in this time, I don't know if people listened to the Fed session this morning, we are looking at a difficult potential economic outlook for us to provide economic stimulus in a time where there's uncertainty for the community in terms of like where that will come from, is very important. Also, as we all know, mortgage rates are going up, so affording single-family housing getting more expensive, rental properties are very important for people who want to live here. But my career is in the renewable energy space. I've been, spent my whole life, I'm deeply passionate about climate change and the reality cities playing absolute critical role in solving the climate challenge, which we have as a society. In particular, cities which are critical transportation nodes, as Gaithersburg is. And cities are not standalone, single-family houses widely distributed, it is dense development with multifamily housing. It is very important because it does actually reduce the transportation energy fish, uh, needs by person, so it's more efficient. It reduces the average water usage by person, and it reduces the average energy use by person. So cities are the forefront of the climate change battle, if we like it or not, and that's partly because of the dense development, the benefits of the dense developments, which comes to it. There is a project, we need to see more of those. I hope the project will be larger, hope there will be more projects like that, in particular if we're trying to develop cities. So I hope that helps, but I wanted to express that voice because I think we need to look at the bigger picture as well. I understand everyone is a little bit touched by something changed and progress. We need to look at the broader importance for the community, for the whole district here, and for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Casper Sherif, and I live in Montgomery County, specifically in Silver Spring. I'm here to say that I am supportive of this project, very much so. Lot has been said, I won't regurgitate. I brought two pages of notes, I'm not going to use any of it, but a few things have stood out. Montgomery County is a great place to have a family, to live, to raise a family. I have two children who are both married, live, live away from home. My son and his wife and my grandson live literally five-minute drive from where I am, in a development that has 180 townhouses, another 36 townhouses, and a building with about 200 or so apartments, all of it across from the Glenmont Metro Station. None of this existed when I moved here 10 years ago, and it's all been built in the last five or six years. And there's not a traffic issue, there's, there's no problem of that kind. I have been told that Montgomery County has determined that we need 41,000 additional housing units. There are not going to be 41,000 additional housing units if people don't want to see one more car on the road. You know, if that's what we want, then there's not going to be any expansion, there's not going to be any development. We should just say, we don't want to change anything, we love the way it is here. But that's not how life is going to go. Things will get developed, people are moving in. I live in a, in a neighborhood with 110 or so single-family homes, and my neighbors, they do not want to see one tree changed, they don't want to see one limb removed, they don't want somebody building, expanding their driveway and so on, because we're all there very comfortable. But the county's changing, and, and, and we all know how difficult it is to have affordable housing. Young people are not able to, to live in Montgomery County anymore. A lot of people who are middle and lower-income workers are act, working in Montgomery County are actually living elsewhere and coming in to just be able to work here. So, you know, we have to look at that. This is an area which has got all kinds of elements that makes it very prime for development of such a multifamily housing. There's commercial area, there's, there's train connection there, and of course, people who are used to living in single-family homes don't want to see that changed, and that's understandable. Same for my, my neighborhood where I live. But very close to my neighborhood, when the townhouses were built, everybody is happy with it. It has allowed a lot of people to move in, a lot of people to be able to live there, who could not otherwise live in, in that vicinity. So as far as the detail of the traffic study and so on, I, I can't speak to that. Of course, more housing units will bring some traffic, you know, and that's going to happen. And that, that cannot be a reason to say we do not want any development, okay? Of course, it has to be reasonable. If there are traffic control issues that need to be addressed, that's a separate matter. You know, even where I live, very little traffic, but there have been close accidents because somebody was driving irresponsibly. And, and that's a whole separate matter. Anyhow, I support this project. I hope the commission will approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ted Bedell. I'm here in support of this project. I think it's a great project.
Would you state your-
I am a Gaithersburg resident. I'll just give you a little background. I, I moved here in 1986 with my wife. We've had two kids. We raised our kids here. They went to Gaithersburg High School, and belonged to the Church of Ascension, was on a vestry member there, have had dealings with the city council on different proposals of redevelopment there. So I'm also a founder of a small business that started in Montgomery Village, and we moved our headquarters to Park Avenue, actually 15 Park Avenue, so I'm very familiar with that, and it still resides there now until this development moves forward. But I love this place. It's great. It's a great town. I love the, the diversity of people and cultures, it's incredible. I mean, you can't get it. Somebody already mentioned, you know, this is the most diverse place in the, in the country. You know, I grew up in upstate New York. I used to tell people I'm from New York. Now, when they ask me, I tell them, I'm from Maryland, and specifically, I'm from Gaithersburg. But I'm an opponent of growth. It needs to happen. If you don't grow, you're going to stagnate and eventually wither at the vine. You know, we've seen development going on all around the county, all around the city. And you look around, you look at Rio and Washingtonian Center, you look at Kentlands, you look at Crown Farm. Now we look over here at Lake Forest Mall, and there's a fence around that, they're getting, they're getting ready to redevelop all that. You're worried about traffic. Traffic is coming, no matter whether you develop this property or not. There's growth around you, and it's coming through you and around you. It's going to happen. So this project is in line with the master plan, right? I mean, you look, you look at the master plan, there's renderings in that master plan, it almost approximates what they're proposing. People are living here, and by the way, how many residents are there on Park Avenue and Brook Avenue that this property is impacting, really, directly? There's only three residents on Park Avenue, the rest are businesses. So this is a great development. We need housing. You know, we need people to come in here, embrace this. These people, young, energetic people, we need vibrancy. This is going to help, it's going to support businesses. This Old Town, you know, we bought the property, my partner and I, because we believed in the, in the potential of Old Town. That was in 2007. What's happened since then? Really not much.
That's three minutes.
So you can choose growth, or you can choose continued stagnation and withering at the vine.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Am I done?
Yeah, that's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and if you have more, please, please do submit your written testimony, we're happy to-
No, I just support the project, it's a great deal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Name's Ed Richley, live on Walker Avenue, walked over here with the group. So here we go again. Once again, a bunch of people who don't live here are telling us how to live and what's best. And it's really been hard for me to understand the city, and I mean the staff and mayor and council's enthusiasm for this developer, for this development project. But it's just been really hard for us to understand that. So two years ago, we had a Zoom call with the applicant when it was 150 units. You've heard about that tonight. And the residents at that point made it clear that it was just too big for that little spot. And so what did they do? They went to 180 units. And I want to thank the commission in the December meeting for insisting that, that the development would be, any development would be well-integrated with the neighborhood and appropriate for the space. I feel, despite what's been said, that this plan is not particularly compatible with the Old Town master plan, which keeps a lot of those houses and builds them out and talks about some multifamily development on the corner. But the commission's well-intentioned recommendation for community involvement led to a professionally moderated meeting at City Hall in January. However, this inadvertently turned into a bit of a disservice because it was obvious to anyone in the room that, that the elephant in the room was just the size of the project, that it was too big and inappropriate. It was made abundantly clear. There are photographs of Post-it notes to, to demonstrate this. And I said disservice because that kind of got flipped on its ear here, where the applicant is now going from 180 back to 150 and saying, look, we listened to the community and did what they said. Well, they kind of didn't. And I think that's been made clear here tonight, too, that it's just, and in fact, the applicant himself said that the one thing they didn't deal with was the density of the project. Well, that was the whole point. That was the elephant. And it just was ignored.
30 seconds.
Okay. So it's really the size and the density that's the problem, and add to this the proximity to single-family homes, and inadequate road access, destruction of green space, all make it really incompatible. This isn't what's needed in Old Town. We have lots of rental units, and lots of them are new. It hasn't revitalized a thing. We need long-term commitment and homeownership here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ben Bach. I'm the founder of a, a small business based in Montgomery County in Bethesda. It's called Aquis, and we are a submetering company. I know there's been various points expressed tonight, and I, I wanted to honor all of that, but I just wanted to make it clear, you know, I'm speaking from a water resource point of view as relates to this project. There's been said, a lot said about density and, and multifamily development. In that type of setting, submetering is really useful because it really accomplishes two things. One is accountability, that is, that folks who live in dense units become more accountable in their water usage by the fact that it's been, it's being measured. And what that leads to is number two, which is water conservation. And from a water resource standpoint, that is very important. So in a multifamily unit development like this, it, it's beneficial to have submetering, and I want to express the view that we are, are, are lucky to have a developer who is considering having not only just development, but sustainable and smart development. And that's really what I'm a proponent for. So I appreciate your time, and I wanted to express my views on, on this particular development as it relates to the water resource impacts that it's really promoting, which is sustainable development. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lori Galletto. I'm a homeowner in Summit Crossing condominiums on the 300 block of Park Avenue, and have been a Gaithersburg resident since 2011. I'm here to express my concerns and objections regarding the proposed plan. When I left the planning commission meeting on December 7th, I was very optimistic. The applicant was tasked with having a community meeting and addressing community concerns including traffic, parking, and compatibility. I attended the community meeting in January, which I thought was well-attended, and was hopeful that meaningful updates would be made to the proposed plan. However, I was very surprised to find out that the revised proposal doesn't address the major themes that were raised at the last planning commission meeting or at the community meeting. Although the plan removes 29 apartment units and increased setbacks by less than three feet, these superficial updates don't substantially change the issues previously raised by the commission and the community. My primary concerns are that the proposed changes do not address the existing traffic volume and parking problems and their impact on neighboring roads. These roads were designed for a relatively low-density neighborhood and are already struggling to cope with the current impacts of community growth. I'm particularly worried about the increase in traffic on Park Avenue and the surrounding areas which are already burdened. In addition, my community is already suffering from the through-traffic that uses Bell Place to reach North Summit and avoid the stop sign at Park and North Summit. Bell Place is a private road maintained by the condo association of Summit Crossing. Should the site plan be approved, it would put additional pressure on the reserves and operating expenses due to the increased traffic. Finally, the proposed plan will put pressure on the already limited and overcrowded parking on Park Avenue and surrounding area. For these reasons, I strongly object to the proposed site plan and request the commission reject the site plan as currently drafted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Glass. I live in Kentlands, but I was the owner of 201 Brooks Avenue before it was sold to the developers. Anyway, I'd like to- Anyway, I'd like to start by thanking the city of Gaithersburg and its residents for supporting my dental practice at 201 Brooks for 26 years. I've enjoyed living here and being a part of this community. Because I have deep ties to this community and care about its future, I'm here to speak in support of the proposed residential project that will include my former property. I believe that this proposal has been carefully crafted by the principals to add much-needed upscale housing and necessary infrastructure improvements to the neighborhood. They have taken great care to integrate the elements in a harmonious way with the surrounding area. And they've detailed tonight the multiple hoops that they've jumped through in order to do that. This project will create jobs, bring young professionals into the area, and bolster the financial foundations of local government. Assuming that the economic upheaval that seems to be headed our way arrives, it's hard to overemphasize the importance of creating jobs and strengthening the local tax base. Failure to embrace a project that will bring so many potential benefits to the community at large, and I'm not just talking about Gaithersburg, I'm talking about the broader community. Anyway, failure to embrace that would seem to be a disservice to me. Of course, it goes without saying that change can be stressful, but change is inevitable and necessary. What's important is to structure the needed change in the least disruptive way possible and to address the concerns of those most affected. Mr. Siddiqui and his associates have done this as well as anyone could, and they should be recognized for their efforts in this regard. My experience with them has shown them to be honest, ethical, and kind. I believe they want to do something good for Gaithersburg, and of course, they want to make money for themselves. It's not a crime to make a profit. When I first moved into my office at Brooks Avenue in Gaithersburg, the Park Station apartment complex directly across the street hadn't yet been conceived. The dilapidated apartments that were there at the time were problematic for the neighborhood in terms of petty crime and sometimes violent behavior after dark. When those apartments were ultimately demolished and replaced with the Park Place Apartments,
Thirty seconds.
the neighborhood, the neighborhood was almost immediately safer, more diverse, and more affluent. My point is that change, while anxiety-producing for some, has the promise and potential to improve the quality of life for the residents if it is carefully conceived and well-managed. This proposal is such a project and should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Thelma, and I live right across the street where this site is going to be. I am one of the three residents on Park Avenue that will be affected. And I'm here actually representing my mom, who's the owner of that property, and she couldn't come because she is currently working. And she doesn't speak English, so she couldn't even speak anyways. But my mother bought that house 28 years ago, and I grew up there. I have all my fondest memories. I've seen how that all of that property has become gentrified. The key word here is gentrified. We have, our house is really big, so we have a lot of space. We rent out some of our bedrooms to help with the mortgage because we do not have degrees, like half of these people that are here or half of the city of the Gaithersburg. Because you are in Old Town, if you do notice, all you're surrounding is a lot of Hispanic people that live with a lot of people to help each other pay the mortgage or the rents in apartments because one person cannot afford one property here in Old Town. So more housings are coming. We need housing. I'm cool for where Lake Forest is. I'm all for that property. Yay, we're going to get something new. I'm all cool. They can go there. There's, we don't need there. Parking, I have been a victim of, my car was parked on Park Avenue, and a car ran through the stop, totaled my car. I got a knock at the door. I was living at Park Station. And I got a knock at the door saying, "Hey, your car got totaled because someone ran the stop sign." So I lived five years in Park Station. My rent each year got higher. My last year that I paid there was $1,700. I could not afford that anymore. I had to move back home with my mother to help my mother with her mortgage. So I'm here for half of the Hispanic people that cannot be here, that are afraid to be here, that don't think they have the rights to be here. We cannot afford rent in Old Town or Montgomery County without living with a lot of people. So they're saying they want to build 180 apartments to bring in young professionals and stuff. So what, you're taking out all the rest of Hispanic people that are here because you're gentrifying the rest of the area? This community is so diverse, but where we're at right now, it is more Hispanic people than anything. One thing, I do not shop around those businesses. I don't support our local businesses right there up the street, like the ones that support here. They're too expensive. Their stuff is not as good. So I don't go. Like Morasang is one of their supporters. I don't go because their stuff is overpriced. That's another thing. So even with these people coming in, it's not going to help that they're going to go to these other businesses because everything is high. So again, I am totally against this. It does not mean any of the stuff or things there, whatever. And also, they'll take my sunlight. So I have a beautiful garden. My garden is the most beautiful. All of you guys on there. I will be gone. It will be gone because of the sunlight. We're not hitting no one. So I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tariq Hussain. And I came here with these notes, but I loved the discussion. And I have worked with the World Bank for 40 years doing development globally. When you bring in a project, it produces displacement, and that's what people have been talking about. Some will be affected. There will be classification given, or people will be hurt. But we also forget that there is a group of people who we should worry about. So your children, who, my children grew up here. I moved into this city in 1991, when Rockville was just, Rockville Pike was just two streets, and now it's different. I live on Murray Branch, and it's supposed to change. So you should be looking, as the planning commission, on the long-term impact of this project, on the regional attractiveness of this area, because it will produce jobs. Is Bethesda developed? I mean, where I live, very near there, you have a farm. Our neighbor had an ostrich. These things get affected. And we are talking about that my car will be affected. Please think long-term, okay? You will create, whether it's 151 or 181 or 200, it will have a displacement effect. And new people will come. Jobs will come. The retail and the population here will interact properly. All those things will happen. And talking about estimates, traffic has to many one of those. There are large errors in there, but that's the future is. So I would say the planning commission, please look at it very positively. It's a positive development which will improve this community. And the people who will be affected will basically be, see, you always have losers and you will have gainers. And the net is how you choose. So I came here to say other things, but my experience, I have worked in Africa, Middle East, Pakistan, United States, Canada, everywhere, on this urban development issues and larger development issues. We were not worrying about climate change in 1970s. Now we are. Now we are worrying, if you walk more, it is good. Now we are told, don't sit too much.
Thirty seconds.
All right? So I came here to support this project, and I urge you to increase it, have more discussion, better estimates. But think of the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Patton, and I'm a business owner, pastor, and resident of Old Town Gaithersburg. And based on the other comments, I'm slightly embarrassed to say I did not walk here. I also want to, want to thank you for, for your service, and I really appreciate the passion for our beloved community this evening. I live, work, and worship here, and I really represent the best of both worlds, which I think this is really what this is all about. I've lived and worked in Gaithersburg for most of my life, and I'm impacted in a slightly different way, whereas I'm, you know, I'm a business owner here. I live here, and so I get both the nine-to-five livelihood, after-five, and on the weekends. And I'm left with the conundrum of having to leave the area oftentimes, you know, to access, you know, the play part of live, work, and play, if you will. And so I love to see the growth and development in this community. I really feel like we're on the cusp of promise. I've been able to travel the country and the world and see what it means for communities like this, where you're able to find that healthy balance. And I believe that development is a sign of a healthy and growing economy, a community that is bringing in new residents and businesses like mine that are continuing, are able to continue to grow. I'm also a part-time employee of the city, so I have a vested interest in, in everything about this community. And as you know, the retail businesses everywhere are struggling in the U.S., as well as Old Town, which is no exception. It's hitting close to home, obviously, with the closing of Lake Forest Mall. We have many established brands and retailers there. And I believe one of the causes of the issue is really the unbalanced and disproportionate growth of affordable housing. And retail businesses need demand. Businesses like ours need demand with high disposable income in order to thrive. And so one positive aspect of this project, which I'm in support of, is that it is based on market rate housing, as was discussed earlier. And it's my understanding that the developer is also anticipating this will attract young professionals, much younger than me. I fancy myself to be hip, but, you know, I worship at Highlight Church right around the corner. A lot of young folks there that worship but live outside of the community but are interested in coming here. So we believe that the design, construction, and investment in this project will positively impact this local economy. I also believe that it will bring about more economic growth and the inevitable density that is coming to our area in a very smart and efficient manner, an intentional manner. And the apartments will really help to revitalize and support local businesses rather than replacing them. And so with Lake Forest Mall leaving, and I'm glad that there's a new project, but we got to find a way to support growth in higher density without resulting in closing of more retail establishments. So the local business community, myself included, is in full support of this project and really excited about the potential increased business that it will bring for each of us. You know, we'll grow and flourish as we grab hold of the promise of our future. It'll attract housing, bring more money into the economy, and bring more people. Newly-built, well-maintained, attractive apartment complexes are great for walkability and creating and spurring additional investment. And so I'm here tonight, tonight with everyone to share our perspective. And as you consider this, I encourage you to not be swayed by a few in the community, vocal their criticism, and see the benefit of this project. And finally, it's been said that, you know, people perish due to a lack of vision, and I firmly believe that that also applies to cities and towns as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Laura Surles. I live over on Nine Highland Avenue. Please excuse my dress. I just came from volunteering with the city for volleyball coaching. So I am here with a lot of the community that is here to express my disapproval of the site plan, and I please encourage you to listen to the community that lives here and reject it. I would like to make it clear that I'm not against development of this site. However, the site plans put forth by this developer have gone from bad to worse, and the developer has been blatantly opposed to listening to the community, who have been willing to work with them since 2021. The developer held a meeting for the community, and we had some great discussions with the children of Mr. Siddiqui, who are also investors, about how they could develop the site in a conscientious manner that respected the needs of the community. After this event, I was very excited to see what they would come up with. The community essentially asked for a three-story building, 80 apartments with a floor or two of condos instead of apartments, usable green space, not just strips-along buildings, enough parking spaces for the residents to have two cars, and the preservation of just one of the historic buildings on the proposed 15 Brooks. Instead of listening to the reasonable feedback of some of the members of the community, they are presenting two very tall buildings, no reduction in units from the original 151 from the original 2021 plan, and 2.6 more feet away from the building is not usable green space. I want to make that clear. While they have backed off on their request for a waiver for an extra story, you will still be allowing a five-story building based on the height of the roof alone. The roof of before the building on Brooks is 60 feet from the proposed ground surface elevation, and the building on Park is 65 feet, as seen on A 4.01. Where at, where they are at or above the typical size of a five-story building with no roof, estimated around 55 to 60 feet, give or take. This will negatively impact the feel of Old Town community, since it doesn't have Asbury Methodist Village to offset the feel of the area with the open space that it has in the already-in-place multifamily buildings across the street. The hill and the grain change do not account for the sheer impact that these buildings will have on the look and feel of the community. As a person who has conducted traffic studies, this one is insufficient for the given area. It does not take into consideration that most people who live here will need to have cars and use them to access grocery stores, pharmacies, and any other amenities in the area that are not readily accessible by train or bus. There are no current grocery stores along the marked line, to my knowledge, so it is incredibly unreasonable to think that the more affluent people that they are trying to attract will not use their own cars to go to the store directly after work. Additionally, unless the developers are only going to allow people that live there to take the train into work, it is completely unreasonable to assume that most of them will not use their cars to access the myriad workplaces in the area like NIST or all the biosciences locations that Gaithersburg is well-known for. Lastly, as a stormwater management designer who has designed multiple of the approved and installed stormwater facilities in Gaithersburg, these developers are not accounting for the requirements required by the city. They would need to ask for a waiver since they have not included any areas significant enough to put in stormwater management facilities. It is a regular pitfall that developers encounter that costs them tens of thousands of dollars in delays and redesigns. Their lack of accounting leads me to believe that they are not ready for another city requirement, and they are not doing the proper amount of research that has already been proven many times with other issues. Thank you, Mark, for the time. Sorry for my quick talking.
Thank you. You got it all in.
Most of it. Thank you for your time was the last part. I'm so sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sayed Hader Ali. I live in North Potomac, and I've been living there for about 22 years. I'm here to support this project at Park Avenue. Some, some of the things that are to be brought to the attention is that this project will bring higher revenues for the city of Gaithersburg, increase the profits of the business community in Gaithersburg, encourage other investors to develop similar projects in Gaithersburg, help store, store the problem of public housing, and particularly the market rate housing in Gaithersburg. Gaithersburg City has already zoned, has already zoned the CBD enterprise, has already approved the zoning of the CBD for this project. Last, but not the least, I received a brochure in the mail just a couple of days ago, and knowing that people were talking about parking difficulties and traffic densities, I just brought that brochure with me, and it is for City of Bethesda. And when people talk about density and traffic, just see how the big buildings are going to be built. This is a grand view project that's going to be taking place in Bethesda. And again, every time there is progress and the project is moving on, there will be some displacements, but overall, in the long run, it will have a positive effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. I'm Howard Kaufman from Germantown, no relation to the commissioner. I appreciate...
How long have you been waiting to say that?
Actually, if you check one of the written exhibits, I did state that earlier. So I appreciate that we have had policy advocates from other parts of the county. It's refreshing to see that. I myself am not a resident, as I said, at Germantown, but I have lived in greater Gaithersburg since 1985. And I've seen the city from literally all directions. First Montgomery Village, then the Coverly, just west of Crown, and now just north of the city in Germantown. I've also worked in the city at the Business Park across from the bowling alley, 900 block of Cloper Road for 10 years. After that, used Old Town and Metropolitan Grove commuter stations. Had another family member... Had another family member who has volunteered at the clinic at Metropolitan Grove. I'd like to give my views of both working in the city long-term, as well as from what I've seen from just barely outside, the legal border. Very familiar with this area, and first I have to question the total economic impact of more construction I have seen since 1985. Hidden Creek, The Crossings, Archstone, and Park Station be constructed, yet how much impact will another 150 units have on Old Town? There's already older product like Summit Crest and Spring Ridge, and I don't know what's happening with the Fishman site, but that's quite a large development that would have an impact on Old Town if it ever got developed. As far as the traffic count, I noticed that commuter rail is mentioned, but Mark is rush hour peak, only one way, as everyone knows. So I don't know if the handbook accounts for that or if it would have to derate the impact of being so close to a mark station. Again, traffic density and, you know, the impact on the community and the parking, I just see to be minimally impacted by this latest revision. On some of the written exhibits, I wanted to mention equity has been mentioned, not so much verbally, but in some of the written exhibits that just came in. And I wanted to note that workforce housing is already planned in the development at 355 and Central Avenue, and it's likely to be a major part of the Lake Forest plan, but we just have a market rate product here. The transit hub will remain at Lake Forest. It may move a little bit--
Thirty seconds.
But it's still not going to be adjacent to this site. And so I feel that, you know, a market rate, one and two-bedroom, no den, won't have much appeal for working from home or telecommuting, and really don't see much benefit from this project, and I urge you to reject the current plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Ranshaw. I'm from Leightonville. Lived in Montgomery County my whole life. Worked for Montgomery County government for 25 years and retired. And after I retired, I started working for Harris from time to time. And, I mean, Old Town's been a big part of my life as a kid, you know? I'd go with my dad to Victor Lit's and go to Gaithersburg, Lumber, and all of that. And I mean, the Gaithersburg that I remember as a kid was a cool town, but it's nowhere near like the town it is today. And I kind of look at it like things change. Some of them we like, some of them we don't. But, you know, we have to try and figure out where we can find common ground. And I support the project for Park Avenue simply because, you know, adequate housing for young professionals. I think that's important. I know it is for my children. And I think it's important to be able to live close by to where you work, whether that's the hospital or, you know, the many things that Gaithersburg offers. But I mean, honestly, the changes that I've seen in Montgomery County in my life, I've lived here 64 years, and it's like, it's a lot, you know? Hadley Farms used to send our milk to Leightonville. That doesn't happen anymore, you know? And I look at it like the change is good, and Harris is a good guy to work for. I've worked for him for a lot. I'm a master electrician. I did 444 at North Frederick Avenue, like, phew, a long, long time ago. But I mean, I just see Gaithersburg evolve. It's gotten better. You know, the people, my friends, you know, I mean, it's part of my life, and I'm happy to support Harris and the Park Avenue project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Yes.
Please.
Hi, I'm Amelia Barrett. I'm the problem, it's me. I live directly across the street from the proposed complex with my husband and kids. I'm asking you tonight to reject this concept site plan and start over. There's already a really strong context here to respect and understand, and not only not harm, but somehow lift up and embellish. Trying to find the right mix of housing, putting the right product at this corner is really our goal. Something creative is what this corner really needs. I don't find anything that integrates the community. There's no park, there's nothing in this project that would allow this to expand. Those buildings that are presented do not conform to some of the surrounding uses. They do not reflect the character of Old Town. Our greatest successes were built around community, what the community wanted and felt was needed, because they lived there and experienced it every day. Those are all statements made by you, the commissioners, to the applicant in December. I have to state that most of these issues have been ignored or not fully addressed by the site plan. I have a technical clarification that I want you to clear up following this regarding the city code requiring a setback of at least 15 feet from an existing building where there are windows facing it. This goes to the issue of massing of these structures. It's just too large for the plan. It's not compatible with the surroundings. It's literally no different from these single-family teardowns in Bethesda that maximize their rebuild to cover every allowable inch of land. That's the same thing that's happening here, that's happening in these single-family areas. I also have to say there were many inaccuracies with Harris's statements earlier. It's also quite the juxtaposition to see the two housing plans here tonight. Thank you for, Susie and Clark, for doing the math comparison. I'm not a math whiz, but I do know, I can see that the proportion of land to unit is not equitable on this side of the city. And do you know what they also have within walking distance that Nike site? A full-size grocery store. Wow. Meanwhile, at this site, within a three-block radius of Park and Brooks, there are 380 apartments at Park Station, 400 at Gaithersburg Station, 180 total at The Crossings and Cedar Court, 300 at Hidden Creek, 964 units on Summit between GES and Gerard, as well as a couple small two-story units on Brooks and Russell. This area could not be more dense without the amenities. Not to mention 1,600 units coming to Lake Forest and 109 approved at Fishman, 72 at Central Ave. What do we not have walkable access to? A grocery store. Have you ever walked a mile carrying groceries or taken two buses to CVS or Giant? People still need their cars to get around. The people who spoke in here tonight may not even be aware of these developments. I know that the Siddiquis were not aware of Lake Forest--
Thirty seconds.
--at our last meeting. We're not asking you to not build here. We're really asking for something that enhances the neighborhood, expands a variety of housing options available for families, maintains the historic context of Old Town, and does not worsen already terrible traffic pattern. You have an opportunity to show the rest of the county region how to create missing middle and gap housing, a historic area that embellishes it rather than cramting sardines into a can. You've read the housing results, housing survey results, and understand that people want more things in high density. Please reject this plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak? Yes, please.
My name is Joan Burgowitz. I live at 14 Park Avenue, directly across the street from this proposed project. I live in a house that was built in the 1890s, which is completely in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, and this project that is proposed is not even close to being in keeping with the neighborhood. I want to ask each and every one of you personally to reflect upon how you would feel if this project were going to go forward when you live where I live and have lived here since 1975 and built my whole life here, paid all of the taxes, voted in every election, and in my senior years, I'm going to be forced out of my own home due to incompatibility with the surroundings. I won't be able to drive safely on my street. I won't be able to feel confident about parking in front of my house. This is not the right project for this place. The fact that this developer came in in the middle of a pandemic, there was never one for sale sign put up in front of any of these properties. This was all an underhanded clandestine deal to snatch up land so that a developer could come in and make a big profit on a new project that is both ill-suited for this location and not necessary with all the other surrounding high-rise apartment buildings. I just, I'm very emotional about this. This is very disturbing, and I would like to ask each and every one of you how you would feel if you were in my shoes. I've sent you letters. It's all on the record. You can read my remarks and the reasons why I don't think this should go forward. If you haven't been able to do so yet, I request that you do, and I request that you completely reject this project. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Paula Ross. I'm the president and CEO at the Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce, here to speak in support of the concept site plan. The Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce, the GGCC, represents the Up County business community and over 460 member businesses of all sizes, many industries. We appreciate the opportunity to provide support for the concept site plan for the proposed residential development tonight. Since the December meeting, Harris Design has conducted a listening session and made several changes that accommodate community concerns, including reducing the total number of units, increasing the parking ratio, expanding tree counts and green space, and making certain amenities available to the neighborhood. This area was designated as a central business district in 1997, designated for higher density in the 2003 master plan, and then designated as an enterprise zone in 2007 to encourage more development. Excuse me. This project meets the intent and the need of those designations. You've heard it here a dozen times tonight. Montgomery County is in the midst of a significant housing shortage, particularly missing middle housing near transit. This project is a good example of how to add residential density in an existing neighborhood while maintaining the overall character of the area. Multifamily housing projects like this one would serve a wide range of household types and needs, and will help beautify the neighborhood by providing updated sidewalks, green areas, and by alleviating parking congestion on Park Avenue. There are several other aspects of this project that make it particularly important at this time. One, that it's walkable to transit. This is a rare opportunity to build additional units in walking distance. To the mark station in Old Town, it fits with Thrive and the master plan. Proximity to Old Town, this project provides additional residential density needed to support the economic vitality, the businesses of Old Town as the chamber, we support that indefinitely. Proximity to Lake Forest, the additional residential density of this proposed project will support the economic viability of the newly approved Lake Forest master plan area. Compatibility, given the proximity to Diamond and Summit Avenues, the proposed buildings are compatible with the neighborhood. Our city will benefit from the new expanded landscaped rights away, improved tree coverage, sustainable stormwater management, resource reclamation, and solar generation. No major impact to parking, I think that's been hashed out tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to lend our support to this concept site plan, and we urge your approval. And, you know, I live in Germantown across the legal border. I lived in Gaithersburg--
Thirty seconds, please.
--for 13 and a half years, and I work in Gaithersburg. I worked right down the street here for nine years, and now I work up the street on Clopper Road. And anything that the chamber can do to support the growth and vitality of the city of Gaithersburg, we will let our support to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any-- Oh, Mr. Sesma.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Mike Sesma. I live in West Riding in Gaithersburg, and I'm a retired council member, so I know you all very well. I'm also happy to admit that I am partly responsible for our vision for the future of Gaithersburg, including dealing with housing and the need for it. In fact, I think I was responsible for initiating some of the major issues as a member of the council. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the commission tonight on this development plan. Again, the revised site plan remains fundamentally flawed. The overall plan does not complement or enhance the existing residential neighborhood and will create burdens on the community that the staff recommendation still fails to recognize or acknowledge. The changes are minor to this plan and reflect the plan that was initially shared by the applicant with the neighborhood. I expect that by now you recognize the bait and switch here. The proposal in December was 180 units. They never, they had always focused on 150 as the number. That's what the developer told me that himself. There was never real intention for the height waiver or the 180 units, and the mass and scale did little to enhance the neighborhood and adequately address the goals of redevelopment of Old Town and the housing priorities for the city. It should be clear, the objective is to optimize profit rather than provide a project that enhances the community and contributes to and complements the historic identity of this neighborhood. As I noted in my previous testimony on this plan, the applicant failed to actually study the site and its challenges before acquireance assembly. How do I know that? Mr. Siddiqui told me that himself. He also told me that certain numbers were necessary to make this project viable. I told him then and will remind the commission that the city is not responsible for making the applicant whole. I'll focus on the fact that the applicant has inadequately responded to the issues raised by the commissioners at the last hearing. The major impact and burden of this project remain. Most importantly, the project is not compatible or complementary to the adjacent, well-established community and will not enhance the existing conditions to the benefit of the current residents and the city's vision for Old Town and even residents who will live here in the future. Even each of the commissioners raised these issues, and I expect you are disappointed in the response that you have from the applicant. I was very disappointed that staff--
Three seconds.
--in the staff recommendation and report on this site plan, a number of issues have been raised, so I won't enumerate them. Again, basically, it's about the scale of the project. It doesn't fit the neighborhood, doesn't complement the context of the neighborhood, and it doesn't enhance the neighborhood for the current residents or the future residents. The changes are minimal, and they do little to address the major needs that the city has and the vision for Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Sahida, and I am a property owner on Diamond Avenue, and I have businesses, a couple businesses there and Old Town. I love being part of the Old Town community, and I live in Montgomery Village. We all know more and more people moving in will, it will be the prosperity of future with more people looking, moving into apartments project like, especially when I see my employees coming from Baltimore and all those far farther, it hurts the business too, most of the time. By using smaller land, and these apartments will help preserve open space, and it will especially help the town of the Gaithersburg to grow and prosperity. I have few businesses. One of them is Landomat Insurance Businesses and Check Cashing, and I see how after COVID-19, it has hurt a lot of businesses, and we don't see enough, you can say, we don't find employer and especially the, you know, the population, they're looking for housing and staying in apartments. It will help, I say tremendously. By efficiency, increasing amount of housing available in our city, the project will allow people to more easily choose to live within Gaithersburg. Our residents could live closer to their works and avoid being displaced from the pride of our neighborhoods. Our residents may choose to adopt a lifestyle that is unique to multifamily housing, and I actually support this project. That's all. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Kamran Khan. I've been a resident of this area since 1992. When we first came here, we used to take exit six to get to my sister's house. She lives in the Stonebridge community. And if you gentlemen remember, it used to be a single-track stringy road that went, and there were lots of fields and beautiful farms that surrounded the road. And so when we immigrated to the U.S., we bought a house very close to where she lives, and we used to love it. We used to love the drive on Danstown Road and getting to our own house. And then all this development started. And we used to say, oh my goodness, there's another community coming up. And we used to say, oh, my goodness, there's another community coming up. There's another, you know, it's going to jam up the Exit 6, and it's going to create a lot of traffic hurdles. And it did, for a while. But I am just remembering this to remind everybody that, you know, you have to pay a price for progress. People are affected. People are dispossessed. People are displaced. And what happens is that eventually, people like yourselves, who are the decision-makers, who are, you know, who have to make choices. And these are not simple choices. These are intelligent choices that have to be made. So, yes, I, you know, I've heard the ladies there.
Please just address us and speak to the microphone.
Yeah. So I've heard, you know, both sides of the argument, and they make good points. But my, the only point that I'm making is, you can't stop progress. Progress, and you, you know, and in your positions, can't do that because you need that progress to sustain yourselves and the city of Gaithersburg. So.
Thirty seconds.
Essentially, all you have to do is look at the numbers, look at the figures, but eventually you'll have to decide. If you don't decide in favor of this project now, you'll, you know, it's going to come. It's going to come maybe three years later, four years later. But what's going to happen? You'll have lost that opportunity. So as they say, you snooze, you lose. And, you know, so this is, this is an opportunity you can't afford to pass by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kristin. I'm actually a resident of Frederick now, but wanted to just kind of tell my story about living in Gaithersburg a few years ago, about five years ago. A friend and I were looking for a place to live, and we settled on Gaithersburg. And I worked in Germantown, she worked in Rockville. It was a nice middle ground. We loved the charm and feel of Old Town. But even at that time, we had a hard time finding a place that we both really liked, because while we liked the feel of Old Town, we didn't want to live necessarily somewhere old. We wanted, we found a place at Gaithersburg Station at the time, it was fairly new. And actually really loved the apartment. But about a year later, we decided we both wanted to get our own place. And even at that time, I wasn't able to find a place that met Gaithersburg Station and also was in Gaithersburg. And that's why I ended up moving up to Frederick. And the shortage of quality apartments in Gaithersburg not only affects current residents, but also discourages potential new residents from moving into the area. Therefore, it's essential to have more options and supply of quality apartments to allow current residents to continue living in the area and to attract new residents. I strongly urge you to support and approve new developments, including this project, which will promote the overall growth and development of the Gaithersburg and Old Town community. By increasing the supply of quality apartments, Gaithersburg will continue to be an attractive place for both existing and new residents. The expected population growth in Montgomery County and specifically in Gaithersburg has been discussed extensively. To accommodate this growth while ensuring that our current residents are not displaced, Gaithersburg must utilize all land efficiently. This project has been intentionally designed to accommodate the expected population growth in a smart and effective way. Multi-family housing projects such as this one are crucial to downtowns like Old Town with limited space for housing. This project strategically promotes growth and progress within the community. If we continue to fight against change and development, the town of Gaithersburg will begin to become stagnant and eventually fall behind the surrounding areas. None of us want to see that for this city. And if we truly love this area, we should be supporting its growth and development. There will always be opposition to change in the moment, but we will all look back on this project in years to come and be proud that we were a part of this progress within our community. Old Town Gaithersburg has a distinctive small-town vibe, which we don't intend to compromise with this project. On the contrary, this project will bring more people into the community, allowing it to reach its full potential. The influx of new residents will enhance the community and encourage growth.
Thirty seconds.
We have a unique opportunity to achieve so much with this project. The shortage of quality apartments not only affects renters, but also impacts businesses in the area. Additionally, the city staff has already done significant work to ensure that this project is by the book and provided their support. The commission should support the staff's recommendation and approve this project. It would be improper for the commission to take a different position from the city staff after all of their work and research into this project. I urge you to consider the broader impact of the proposed apartment complex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take a moment right now. Based on our rules of procedure, if we move past 10:30, we have to vote on that. So I move that we continue this discussion past 10:30.
Just to be clear, it's, we won't hear any new items. That's the rule, right?
You're correct, yes.
Okay. So we don't really need to do that for this, because we're already in the middle of it. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we're following procedure.
Appreciate that. Thanks for calling that out. Good evening.
Hi there. Mona Siddiqui. And I grew up in Montgomery County. I no longer live here. And in full disclosure, I am the developer's daughter. I went to middle school and high school here and have been observing the conversation today and participated in the listening session as well. And I'll say, it feels like it's a little personal and justifiably so when changes are happening in the community. It's also been interesting to hear this referred to as sort of the developer. And what I would want to say here is, my dad, who is doing this project, actually raised us all in this community in Montgomery County, was an immigrant who really started from nothing and is committed to the community. This isn't somebody who is coming from outside and coming into the community to develop something. This is somebody who is committed and has been raising kids and has a family and is based in this community. I say that because I think the approach that you take here is not just relevant for now, but also is a signal for how folks think about development and investing in Gaithersburg moving forward. I think it's a chilling signal if developers who even live within the community, who want to do good and who want to do development in a thoughtful way and in a collaborative way can't do so. What it feels like to me, again, as more of an observer, that there have been changes and concessions made, but that there's a direction that folks want to keep versus movement forward. I think it's wonderful that there are community members here who've spoken, who've lived here for 30, 40-plus years. I think that also speaks to the folks that are not here to speak, the folks that are younger, who are, who would want to stay here. When I think about my friends from high school, and I went to college locally here as well, and how many have actually been able to stay here, there have not been any that I can count. And so I think that also speaks to that. I hear the sounds in the background around folks coming from the outside, but I think that that is something that should be perhaps a signal that there are folks like me who couldn't afford to live here when I was looking, and I would have wanted to live here. So the fact that there is a focus in development here from somebody within the community and not outside, I think should be an important factor in where this project moves forward. And of course, not to, I didn't say it explicitly, but I am supportive.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? I want to go to those that are online to see if anyone is going to raise their hand. All right. So technically, I'm looking at the attendees online, and I see a hand up from Catherine George. Can you please connect Catherine George?
She should be unmuted.
Hello?
Ah, good. We hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, very good. Okay. I'd like to point out that at the beginning of the meeting, there seemed to be a fair number of professional, smart-growth people talking, and they were from Olley and from Bethesda and various other places. And they were remarking on the fact that there's a housing shortage in Montgomery County, that we need a diverse population. We want to attract young people who will grow here and continue Gaithersburg's development and so forth. But if you checked with, I think, Amelia Barrett's list as to, there are apartments and condos and townhouses and other dwelling units being placed and erected all around Gaithersburg. This is 1.5 acres in the middle of Old Town. And the reason it's called Old Town is because it's historic and something worth remembering and keeping. And nobody seems to have mentioned the Meyer family from 15 Park Avenue, who were a Jewish family who came here. They were prevented from living in Bethesda. And there are historic things here. I mean, it's not necessary. You can support condos and young people and denser development, and it's going on all over Gaithersburg, all over Montgomery County. Look at Kim Otto's getting redeveloped next to Kim Farm, and the Nike facility is being developed. And you can leave this 1.5 acres alone. And I think a nice project here would to be refurbish and rehabilitate the existing houses. And that would be a good architectural project. And it's four buildings. You can build something on the fifth empty lot. And people, people, people need to consider that. In addition, maybe I'm one of the only people around here, but when I graduated from grad school, I moved back with mom and dad. I commuted on the Mark train, and it went, it's primarily a freight line. It's only got the Mark passenger service from rush hours in the morning and rush hour home at night. And I'd get off at Union Station and walk across the, walk down Independence Avenue. And Washington was a little bit safer back then.
Okay, thank you.
Currently, if I go to Washington, D.C., I go by the metro. So I walk out to 355, catch the bus, and go to Shady Grove Station.
That's your, can you hear me?
Take the red line.
That's your three minutes. Thank you. If you have more.
Very good.
Can you hear me? That's your three minutes. If you have more for the testimony, please do submit it in writing. We'll put it in the record.
Thank you, but I'm done.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Let me look here and see if there's another hand up. I don't see any. Give it a second. If a hand pops up, we'll go to them. Where are we? Chris, what's next? Your recommendation, correct?
No.
We got to ask some questions.
The applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal.
You're right. All right. Let's keep this brief. There were a lot of repeated themes, but if there is something you want to address factual that's been brought, please do.
Well, I feel like if somebody opens the door to something, I should have a right to just comment on it. It's very interesting to be attacked personally in a public setting and for people to presume to know what's in your heart. I heard somebody, Amelia there at the end, say that I've never been to Lake Forest Mall. At the listening session, it was a listening session. I made sure not to share anything, but I feel like I need to now. We all grew up here in Rockville. I went to Wooden High School, finished in 2002. We spent most of our time throughout the '90s going to Lake Forest Mall. I'm not sure where that comment came from. Mike Sesma also made a comment about something my father said. And to keep this from deteriorating into who said what, I feel like these things are being highly distorted. We, when these, when these sort of designations were made, the central business district designation in 1997, the master plan designation of Sector 4, calling out 201 Brooks for 90 units, when this was designated an enterprise zone, we didn't have anything to do with that, right? Mike Sesma would have voted for all of those things to bring density to the area, to those parcels at that time. So I'm just very confused about how we are not compliant or we have something completely different than, you know, what the folks are envisioning. I understand that there's people in the historic district who have a very different vision of the central business district than what's in the master plan. At the listening session, I was told by some participants that, you know, Harris, no matter what you do, you're not going to get a lot of these people on board. And I said, look, we're going to do everything we can, and, you know, we'll let that fall afterwards. But the reason it's taken us five months to come back here today is because there's been a lot of engineering and architecture hours to deploy. I find it really interesting that, you know, when something doesn't go our way, whether it's a traffic study or whatever, that doesn't, the outcome doesn't look what we want it to be. We question people's integrity. I can assure you, no engineer is going to lose their license. Nobody likes me that much. There's ways that these are done. They're calculating peak traffic hours. During peak traffic, it's commuting time that's happening. There's going to be less commuting at, from this place because it is close to Mark Station. When people go to the grocery stores, whether it's in the evening, that's not peak hours. We have to look at peak hours when we're doing that. That's an important part of the methodology. And I don't think it's right to question people who do this professionally and for people to throw the city staff under. We have so, we've had so many revisions, and we're held to such a high standard from all of these people that I just, I'm always puzzled by that. I also think it's really strange that we should consider people who live outside the city limits as second-class citizens. In the previous session, we were, you know, throwing out, you know, talking about renters in a way that doesn't fit my values. And that was disappointing to see. We have today seen support from people who live on Park and Brooks. We've seen support from people who live on Diamond and Summit. And yes, we've seen people who live in Gaithersburg outside the city limits and people who live in Gaithersburg in Silver Spring and in Olley. I counted substantially more people today in favor of this project than people who spoke against. If we count the number of unique households and people with different last names, the discrepancy is even higher in terms of favorable against unfavorable. I will stop there, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Where to now, Chris?
You want the staff recommendation?
I think that's next in the order of things, yes.
All right. The planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant SP 9149, 2021, concept site plan, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the City Code with two conditions. The first, applicant must revise the site plan to address staff comments prior to certification of the plans by staff. And the second, applicant must provide a traffic safety and operational analysis of the Park and Brooks avenues intersection for submission with the preliminary site plan.
Thank you very much. All right, let me start with a couple of quick technical clarifications. Just to be clear, we don't count votes on testimony. That is actually antithesis to the charge we have to weigh and to discuss a site plan on the merits of the plan based on our master plan and based on the zoning regulations. There's a fancy legal term, I think, plebiscited in the community. Frank, you can endorse that or not. We are not going to do that. So anybody who's counting votes is really not. Oh, I'm sorry. We're not counting votes based on testimony tonight. That's not how this works. However, what we do really look for and particularly value is when you all bring up points on the merits of the plan, whether it's data collection, interpretation of the data, information that affects how we should consider compatibility, alignment with some of the master plan requirements, things like that. All of that makes sense. So just to be clear, it's not counting votes who's for and who's against or whether they live here or not. It's about the things that we have the charge to do, which is to weigh this plan, the merits of this plan against our zoning ordinance, the master plan, and ultimately compatibility. So the one thing I do think that all of that brought up, and I want to make sure we get underneath this, and I don't know if we can do it tonight, but I want to make sure it's on the table early in this discussion, is there is some disconnect between what the appropriate table, reference tables in the standard for trip generation and how it's applied to this project. applied to this project and maybe other projects as analogous to this project, whatever those things are, but there's clearly some room for interpretation or some room for application that I think both the commission and the public have brought up as potential questions in whether or not they're, not whether or not they're accurate, not whether or not an engineer is going to lose his license, but whether or not the right framework was established based on the actual conditions of this plan. So I want to make sure we don't lose track of that. The other thing I want to make clear is that one broad interpretation of compatibility is not whether or not this type of building, the way it's currently designed, belongs next to another type of building. It has more to do with whether they can be made to work together with all of the other forces at work. You have to know that in new urbanism, we have it here in the city, there are, this condition exists, and it exists well. But it means solid infrastructure, solid adjacency, solid circulation, solid, everything about the compatibility that it works, not that it happens to be a building that's 60 feet versus a building that's 20 feet. It's that when they are near each other, access through and around and between and all of that makes sense for safe, that's the number one, safe movement of cars, easy and walkable pathways for the people to live there. And that has more to do with the compatibility than whether you think a building looks like it belongs there or not, although that's not an unimportant piece. Keep in mind that we have to look at the safety and we have to look at the flow and the effectiveness of how the infrastructure supports what's being proposed. I'm not coming to any conclusions yet, but that's where, that's where we need to make sure we focus. So I think, I think one of the things to get to early here is whether or not, first of all, there is a housing element of our master plan, and we did sort of gloss over a little bit that this is consistent with the vision of that housing policy, but there's more to it than that, right, Chris? There's things about unit types and sort of diversity and distribution of types of housing, even within a class like multifamily. Is that fair?
Correct, yes. The housing element notes that there is a lack of three-bedroom units in the city. So as noted in the staff report, we feel like at later stages of this project, if the concept plan is approved, there would be opportunity to shift the unit count and hopefully go toward the more three-bedroom units because there's zero now.
Okay. Which wouldn't necessarily net up the count, it might actually affect it in the other direction too.
Correct.
It might net it down. Okay. Go ahead.
Is it worth backing up? Because I feel like we need to do this on just about every application, especially ones with large public interest, and remind us all about the process we're going through here. And if this plan was approved, conditions, no conditions, additional conditions, that is step one. And for us, and especially for everyone in the public, step two, three, and four would be what?
We typically combine preliminary and final site plan. That would be the next stage, and at that stage, we would get final approval for the stormwater, final forest conservation plan, final architecture, final engineering. A lot of details need to be worked out. This is just basically a rough sketch of the project.
Things like final unit mix, things like, does the project even go forward because of adequate public facilities, right? There are breaks in the process at the next step or two. And I think that's, that's important for us all to remember in the context of tonight's conversation.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was thinking of that same thing. If we were to, and I'm not saying that we are, if we were to say this moves forward, there are a lot of steps to get this to the final site plan. There's a lot that can happen, and there's a lot that needs to be discussed and deliberated and decided. So this is not the end of this, and people need to understand that. I just wanted to, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
All right. So let's continue the discussion. Phil, do you want to pick up where that?
Yeah, I mean, I've got several notes here as I've been listening and reviewing and looking at this, and obviously the unit mix one is what we just talked about. There was a comment brought up about the side setbacks of one of the properties where it butts an existing facility, an existing building, and you have windows on two sets, and it looks like we're building right up to or almost on the property line. Can we, can you address that, Chris, the applicant? Where do we stand on that?
Yeah, the side setback, it's supposed to be 15 feet from the side property line. That's measured to the building line, which is any enclosed space, so it encroaches within that 15 feet because it's open parking garage and it's the pool. So that doesn't count. It's essentially like if you had a porch or a deck.
Well, the building is sort of C-shaped up there, so you have end units.
Those are more than 15 feet away. The enclosed space is more than 15 feet away. The open space is less than 15 feet away.
So it's just because we have parking garage?
Which is open and the pool, which is open, yes.
For the applicant, you know, there have been offers put on the table to the community for a number of community amenities, specifically the pool and fitness center. What are the assurances that are put in place for the community that those things are going to materialize five years from now, two years from now, whenever this project is complete? Because there is, as people brought up, there is a long history in Old Town specifically of promises from developers at the early stages of projects that vaporize in reality, and the city does not have a mechanism to come after you 10 years from now when you revoke fitness access to the community. So I think we need to have some understanding of what those are.
Yeah, so I, thank you for bringing that up. That's something that came up in the listening session and sort of the trauma the community has from, from some of these developments is, was something that came through really clearly that day. At this point, because we're at concept site plan very early, at this point, it's this, you know, testimony that is on record, that's all we can do at this point. As this goes further, we can look at ways to build that in more concretely, but given what the city requests at this point and the fact that there isn't actually anything solid in hand to put that in, it's not something, there's no mechanism for it at the moment. But it's something that will go in.
I would strongly suggest that at the time, by the time, assuming you get to a final site plan, that that is ironed out.
Yeah.
Because the reality is, we can't revoke approval when you have a building sitting there and decide to go back on your word. So we need to have something concrete.
Agreed. Understood, yeah.
And I might go to Frank if you could help us understand what opportunities are out there from other projects, whether it's covenants or whatever.
Yeah, particularly if the applicant is willing, there might be a way to, at least from a planning perspective, enforce that and give the city some level of enforcement. But ultimately, that would also come down to the individuals. If they have, for instance, the right to use the fitness center, they would have to enforce that as well.
Sure. Okay.
But, yeah, there would, there would be, with the applicant being willing, that would make it easier for us to add in some enforcement.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
So that we could condition things and have memorated with understanding? Is that a mechanism?
It might be more along, I don't know about a condition on a site plan because you're, it's really not something within the purview, but something along the lines of an MOU might be possible.
Something with teeth.
Yeah. Well, again, the emphasis is the willingness of the applicant to work with the city on that.
Okay.
I think, are we in questions or discussion mode?
Really, both.
Okay. You know, I think at the end of the day, from my perspective, the issue with density is about infrastructure and capacity. It's not about necessarily, are there, are there too many units for the site? That, from my perspective, is a, is really about, can the surrounding area support that density? And on this site, it comes down to pedestrians and traffic. I think that's abundantly clear. It's clear, obviously, from the public comment, but it's also clear from anybody who's spent any time in that area. So, you know, there, this project seems to be at a weird intersection between what the city's responsible for and what the applicant's responsible for, and there's a lot of lack of clarity around numbers and tables, and those numbers and tables trigger, trigger or don't trigger requirements for what comes next. And without confidence in what comes next, it makes it hard for us to move things forward. I think that, that is really the crux of it from my perspective.
I agree.
Are you happy with staff's idea of additional study of the intersection?
I am, but the...
Or do you think a doubling of the criteria we're already using would even get anywhere near the thousand cars that are on that road for that peak hour?
For me, what it comes down to is...
I get you're quibbling with the detail of the number. From a scale issue, I don't know what you're reaching for.
I'm quibbling, I'm quibbling with the number because we're on the cusp of, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a net 30 increase triggers the need for a broader formal. We're at like, we're just up on that edge. So the numbers we use in the table determines whether the applicant is responsible, the numbers we use in the table at this stage determines whether the applicant is responsible at the next phase for having a broader view than just their site and one intersection.
Right.
And that's what I'm concerned about. It's not...
But again, you'll have a study for something that's clearly doesn't, wouldn't trigger onsite improvements, but that's, you know, that maybe which...
That's what I'm saying.
You're after a study that's...
What I'm saying is, we need a broader study of the whole area. The city's talked about doing some of it, but that's not tied to the development approvals process. And so we're in this, we're in this weird sort of, in my mind, we're in this weird situation where, you know, we're all, I'm all, I'm all for density on the site, I'm all for multifamily, like I have no qualms with that, but, you know, if, if a developer were to come in and redevelop that whole block, the applicant's property and others in one shot, we'd be, it would trigger a massive traffic study just because of its size. Because we're dealing with developments that are smaller blocks, the end result 10 years from now may be the same, but because everything has been done piecemeal, there's no requirement for the bigger study. And that's really what I'm after, is the bigger view.
And I also think that it's, I don't want us to be hamstrung by, and Greg, you and I had a conversation about regulations and what's required based on that calculation. And I want to respect that because you don't want to be arbitrary with this process. On the other hand, I don't want to be hamstrung by an arbitrary number either, that it won't get a study just because it doesn't meet this one hurdle at this particular point in time.
If I could interject real quick. At the next stage, if this is approved tonight, they would need to submit again all their final traffic numbers to determine if they are required to do a study or not. The study they provided today for you was not required under our code. It was, and actually, they went above and beyond the requirements to provide you that information. These studies all come at a preliminary and final stage, not a concept per our code.
And there's currently no larger master plan study of traffic in Old Town that the city's comfortable with.
Again, I invite Brian up to answer questions specifically related to our studies in Old Town related to traffic.
That'd be great.
Real quick, Dan. So we'll take another look at the trip generation, as Greg said, at the next step. The key number is 30 net new peak hour trips. They were at 22. We'll check those numbers. The one condition that you have is kind of in anticipation of, hey, they're bumping up against that. These are textbook estimates. We recognize that, so that's why we require that intersection analysis, which would be the critical piece of infrastructure that would be impacted, but we'll take another fresh look at it at site plan as well.
We have no, you know, in the near site plans to do a city, a city analysis of Old Town traffic.
Not an overall master plan. There are a number of projects underway that are looking at the issues there, but...
Right. But to Phil's point, we're a small CBD with small lots, which are, we've spent 20 years trying to assemble these lots into something that's buildable, and the thousand cuts idea isn't, you know, isn't as thoughtful as a bigger study would be. It's money, right? It's money out of our taxes, but might be something to put on the discussion. John?
But I think the upshot is, we know there's concern and real issues with the question about whether the infrastructure can support the traffic to this, this piece of proposed development. There are some very superficial numbers that suggest, maybe it's not that big an impact. That's not good enough when we feel like there's already enough evidence to suggest there's a need for some kind of mitigation for traffic and speed and...
Pedestrian safety.
Pedestrian safety, all of the things that go into that equation. And we can't let this opportunity go by without figuring out how to make that a priority in the course of doing this project. And I, that's going to be one when we figure out.
I have one, one last, you know, more architectural comment, and, you know, in looking at the elevations, I understand that none of the garages have screening. Are you not at all concerned about the atmosphere under there at night when you have, you know, your numbers or the 1.2, you know, per unit? You have 150 cars parked under there, and it's not screened and it's not enclosed. All of the other, you know, the newer apartment buildings in Old Town have semi-enclosed garage with security and understanding that if you enclose that garage, it triggers a 15-foot setback requirement on one side, right? There's, everything's, the arm bone's connected to the wrist bone and so forth, but, you know, what sort of security and enclosure have you considered putting around those garage spaces? Or are you not worried about, you know, vagrancy?
We're comfortable with it as it is.
I question that, given some of the problems that other businesses and folks in Old Town have had with homeless and with people, you know, seeking shelter and, you know, the parking garages, the city parking garage is fighting that issue all the time. So I would just say, like, I question the long-term impact on the community.
We plan on having onsite security in the form of people.
It's definitely something. You should look at the way the Old Town garage is operating, and then, you don't want to step into that trap.
It's going to have to be a larger discussion.
All right.
That's, that's...
Good, thank you.
I'll cede the balance of my...
Matt, go ahead, please.
Well, I'll just note that, you know, we've been working on this master plan forever, and I'm exceedingly excited to see some properties that we didn't even think we were going to be able to assemble, something that was buildable, get assembled, and an application come in. So the idea that this is not compatible from a planning standpoint is, in my mind, wrong. I think that this meets both the intent and the letter of the master plan, rules in the zoning, as we've been, you know, begging and pleading investment into our central business district for a long time. So I'm exceedingly excited to see this, this concept plan come in and eager to get ahold of the final site plan and fidget with the details.
Okay.
It also, it also is yet another, to crack the joke, yet another project I wouldn't have designed, but I think it's a, it's a good compromise with the Historic District Commission. I disagree with a lot of their thoughts too, but they get, they get to make that compromise, and I thought it was a pretty good middle. Too many chefs in that kitchen, but it was a nice middle solution.
Okay. Thanks. Danny?
Cautiously optimistic.
Okay.
Just in general, Danny, you're always cautiously optimistic.
Yes.
Lloyd, comments, please.
Yeah, Gathersburg, for all the years I've been on planning commission, it's been a long time, has always been favorable towards development, towards particularly housing. And I see this project as having economic considerations, the transit, the CBD zone. There is a housing crisis in the county as well as probably around here, and even the environmental impact that something like this would have, the positive environmental impact that something like this would have. However, I have to disagree with some of my members of the commission here. I don't see this being very compatible with the neighborhood, with the immediate neighborhood. I don't see the pedestrian friendliness here. I see a lot of problems with traffic. I see problems with not having amenities like grocery stores, which was brought up. I believe that this is too dense for this area on 1.5 acres. Now, had this been larger, like my other fellow commissioners have said, if it had been a larger group of houses that had been bought up, a larger plot of land, then I could see this going forward, being very compatible. But the infrastructure, the streets, they're narrow. They're not able, I don't believe, able to handle the kind of traffic that may be projected, which we haven't seen the final numbers on, I understand that. But at this point, I am very skeptical about going forward with this project.
I do believe we have a hurdle here to figure out what we're going to do with traffic, how we're going to treat this moving forward. I don't know who I'm looking at, how to figure this out, but...
I was very happy with staff's recommendation to go to the corner that's clearly the problem. You know, my kids have been walking that street since they could walk, and they're of drinking age now. And I, I think that's the intersection of where we're going, and that we're going to prioritize that and make sure that gets, you know, actually trip counted, I'm assuming, and studied, and then onsite analysis and what's, what should be a public or a private improvement will be decided upon.
Yeah, the thing I want to, but I still want to take head on this idea that there's a threshold that has to be met based on... a, there's a, there's a threshold that has to be met based on just a generic table, not not an actual existing condition that would trigger that more in-depth study, so I want to-
The the 30 net new trips is in our traffic impact study standard, which is an ordinance. That is a number that we go by.
Yeah.
We believe the traffic statement that's submitted is correct. It's a correct interpretation. However, we will go back and take a closer look at it to verify that because it's so close and because there is room for interpretation. And then if it trips that, then that full traffic study would be required at site plan supplemental.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Other concerns? We go down the-
Traffic?
Traffic, yes. Phil, you look like you're going to say something.
I'm, I'm, I am struggling with taking the step tonight without having some understanding of where we would go, what the outcome of that further evolution is, right? Typically, when we have these projects, they're of a scale where you just know what concept site plan that you're going to need to do a traffic study. And most of, most of these have a statement that says, based on initial studies, we're going to generate, you know, 5,000 new trips and have to do a traffic study, you'll get it at final site plan. I am struggling with being in a position where we're approving something with a, yeah, we'll see. And that that is, that is my, and that is my main struggle with moving forward here. If we had a, we had a firm statement that said, yep, we're going to do a full-blown traffic study, or nope, absolutely not, we're not doing one, that would at least let us know where we stand.
If I could interject here, I think we just heard from the county traffic person that if it-
It's actually the city.
City, the city traffic person, that if it goes over 30, it will trigger it. I'm not sure why, and also that we have done something that is not even required at this stage typically, so I'm kind of scratching my head why we're being held to a standard that no other project has ever been held to. Traffic will be addressed. It's it's part of the process. We've done it earlier than we needed to to begin with.
We understand, but it's still a concern we want to address. So, we're trying, we're wrestling with how to do that equitably as well. Greg, any, any help there?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a conundrum, and it's, you know, if the answer was we're not doing anything, then I think I personally would be-
It's not an answer that we can answer at the plan.
I know.
So I, I'm not really sure where you're headed. So, you're worried about the threshold, I get that. That's something we're going to see, right, when we reanalyze the numbers. And and you're saying you want that interpretation to be aggressive? You're saying that out loud, right?
Yes.
We want it to be atypical to what we typically do. We want, we want to apply something special for this property.
No, I'm, I'm saying that there is subjectivity in determining factors that get applied, and I want to make sure that we're not improperly applying those to the realities of Old Town.
To the schematic and final site plan.
To the, to the numbers that we have, that we use to determine whether a traffic study is necessary.
Right, for the schematic and final site.
Correct.
Right.
What is the nature-
I'm with you. But but what does that have to do with our vote on the concept plan? I'm honestly asking, it's not facetious, which it normally would be.
But, I mean, I, I kind of feel, because, but I'm willing to 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 move forward, but I am going to focus very intently on traffic going forward.
Fair enough. What is, Chris, remind me again, the way you're treating the Brooks Park intersection, the look at that, right? I mean, that's in here regardless, regardless of the larger, what does that really mean?
Again, I'll defer to Brian.
Those we see to Brian.
What we're basically saying is that, we're asking them to analyze that intersection. It's the same analysis at there if they had to do a full traffic study.
Okay.
That full traffic study would broaden beyond that, but you're, you're, have a small number of trips that are dispersing now over many intersections, so the likelihood of an issue is very small, except at this one intersection, which we're saying, it needs to be done. It's so close, it's so critical, they have to look at it.
And we're already identifying that this is a special condition that only appears basically to this one property, and we're, we're going above and beyond, and saying we're going to do an actual click-click count at this corner, right?
Yes.
And we're going to, and we're actually going to know what those numbers are, it'll be informative to the next set of projects as well. And then, and then the issue of a larger traffic study in the, in the entire neighborhood is, is certainly needed in order to, you know, hopefully encourage more development in Old Town.
All right, one other question, on the streetscape piece, the sort of aesthetic compatibility, the, the, the streetscape component of this. We get a hard look at that when?
Preliminary final.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Because I think I also want to raise a flag that we're not endorsing tonight what, what's in that packet for elevations. It's a general sense that the massing and the, the shape of the buildings seem to be heading in the right direction, but we're not, we're not endorsing that yet, and we need a harder look at that. We didn't talk all about it tonight. I'll make it very clear, because that can have a profound impact on the, on the general perception of this at the street level.
It is concept architecture, it's non-binding, so yeah, they can definitely revise the architecture, the self-direction they receive from the commission.
Yeah, okay.
It's an interesting collision between the historic district and some of the flat-roof requests from the neighborhood, so it's interesting.
And if I could, I would ask the commission to provide some guidance to staff and the applicant as well, if you can tonight.
I don't think we can, because we didn't, we didn't really focus on a presentation of the, of the architecture or discuss it, and it's, it's an awful late hour to open that up.
Well, some of us reviewed it in detail, but the, I think-
No, I mean, as a body, as a together.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so we can, we can discuss it somehow later, or give staff our written, you know, thoughts, for sure. But, you know, it, there is actually a good bit of information in this packet about the porches, about, you know, bringing feet out onto the street, and then an actual green edge to that, to this building, that I think are, you know, great components to the neighborhood. So, if those sketches, you know, concepts can be flushed out with more street, you know, detail, furniture, you know, FFNE lighting, and some textures, it would be a great, you know, a great streetscape.
And those type of details are typically required at final site plan.
Yeah, of course.
And so, diagrammatically, it seems to be okay, but we didn't spend a lot of time looking at it at truly the eye level, you know, what's, what's making sense.
I'm making my decision tonight based on what I think is very thorough to do. But thanks.
As, as a group.
Yeah, okay.
As a group.
Well, you sound a little rogue.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any, any other concerns? What I, what I want to address, one, what, let me do a quick straw man. Phil, where are you at right now, moving forward?
With the, with the conditions and the, you know, discussion of the things that are going to be looked at very, very carefully at preliminary final, I think everyone has, you've heard very clearly, the expectations of the level of detail and level of scrutiny and the number, you know, the thresholds that have to be crossed. I am probably comfortable with moving forward tonight.
Okay. Matt?
That's a great application. Great, good.
Dan, as I said before, I'm willing to move forward, but I'm going to hit traffic hard.
Okay, all right. Lloyd?
I have concerns with traffic, and I have concerns with compatibility, and at this moment, I'm opposed.
Okay. I am inclined to move it forward so we can get to those answers, and, and to be perfectly clear, it's, there's no guarantee. I mean, we have a lot to look at with the traffic, with the streetscape, with the, the mitigation of whatever that traffic tells us, you know, what happens on the street, what happens for safety. But we've got to get to that answer, and if we're not going to get it at this, we've got to move to the next level. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
If, if I could ask one thing, not to interrupt your-
No, that's fine.
-motion, but nobody's made it yet, so, so we have that opportunity. If, if it, I would suggest, I'm guessing that staff in putting the details of this resolution together, it doesn't seem to be entirely simple, that they may, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, might prefer to have the resolution finalized, say, at the next meeting, to give a chance to include everything that should be correctly included, as opposed to just adding in a couple of conditions.
We can definitely put together a draft resolution of approval based off the night's discussion and have it ready for your next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get my head either. We're doing a draft.
I didn't realize we had the-
Yeah.
It's, it's, it is up to the commission, I would, is discretion, I guess, right, Frank?
Right.
If you guys want to do a draft resolution, I think, we feel comfortable doing that tonight based off the discussion, if you would like us to-
Okay, so staff was recommending we go to resolution on this and not just a voice vote. Okay, fair enough.
That's my suggestion.
For a concept site plan?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any, any concerns?
I think we would like a, maybe a motion, though, to have staff draft a resolution of approval based off the night's discussion.
With, okay.
Yeah, that, that was why I mentioned it before the motion.
And, and just to be clear, that resolution would include not only the conditions, but some of the key points of-
It would include the night's discussion, yes.
Okay, so we'll get a chance to review that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Everybody okay with that? Okay? Is there a motion, please?
I hate doing these things. The, I propose that we, we move, thank you, Lloyd.
Danny has the-
Oh, Danny, okay, sorry. That we, that I, that we move to approve a draft revolution, or that staff prepares a draft resolution for SP 9149, 2021?
Just clarify, draft, draft, resolution of approval.
Of approval, with the discussion as we made tonight.
Second?
So move to the seconded? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're opposed, okay, you're, you're approving the-
Approving, I want to see the resolution.
Yeah, okay. So we'll have a draft resolution. What does that do to our record?
The record, is the record closed, Frank?
Well, actually, there wasn't a separate motion to close the record, but when there is, when there is a decision, the record automatically closes. Now, there has been a preliminary decision, so with preparation of the resolution going on now, I would say the record has closed with this preliminary decision. I'll call it a preliminary decision, it appears to be final, but-
Right.
Question of the resolution is not, what are the votes going to be, but does the resolution capture what you want to include?
If it doesn't, we open, reopen the record for discussion?
It, the reason to reopen the record for the discussion would be if somehow the vote, you know, somehow we didn't count the votes correctly, or there would be a separate motion to reconsider, which, under the rules, can also happen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But failing that, the approval of the resolution would just be a matter of, does this capture what we want to say? The approvals happen tonight.
Okay.
So that automatically closes the record.
And then we go back and look at the concept site plan once again?
No, you're looking at the resolution to make sure it follows pretty much what you directed tonight.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that, and then we move to the, the next phase, and if we need to reopen for reconsideration, if it doesn't capture it or-
Of course.
Okay. Please hit the draft, we get the draft in play.
Okay.
All right, so that was, that was approved for draft? All right. Thank you all very much. All right, that takes us to, from the commission, Phil, can I talk?
Nothing for me.
Matt?
You know I have something.
All right.
Of course.
Reminder that we're, we are, I'm, I'm in the midst of planning the 40th anniversary of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, of which I'm still the president. So, we, we have our preliminary theme of 40 years of change, 40 years of growth, and I would really, I'm looking for your input. What we want to do is look at what's going on, when, what has-
Hold on a second. Excuse us, we're gonna, we're still continuing our meeting. Could you take your conversations outside the chambers, please? Anybody? Can't hear me anyway, I guess. We've had that problem before. Just give it a second, let it clear out.
We can't hear you. [laughing]
Can you go ahead and take it outside, please?
All right, Danny, your preliminary theme of-
Forty years. Forty years of change and 40 years of growth.
Ironically.
Right, right.
So, you want me to testify on CBDs and-
Well, but what, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask staff to, and I'm gonna work with you later, but I want to get, like, all the major projects that we worked, like the city of Gaithersburg has worked on over the last 40 years, because I'm going to spotlight some of that, and I might even ask for one of you all to come and, and present, so we're gonna keep that on the table.
Okay.
Okay? But I'm looking forward to your, your collective support of me in this role, and so I'm, I'm going to be asking a lot of you, okay? So, I'm very excited about this process. It's going to be October 24th-
October.
25th and 26th. And we're trying to get a really, a big, heavy hitter for our keynote speaker.
Where's it going to be?
Oh, it's going to be at, at the Kent, in, in Kent, Kent Island. The resort, no, 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 the resort, the beautiful resort there in Kent.
All right.
More to come, more, more details to come.
Be here before you know it.
Yes.
Anything tonight?
No, nothing else.
And I, I'll add nothing tonight. Okay.
Oh, oh, I am so sorry. I apologize. We must, we must congratulate Doris Stokes on being named Clark of the Year. That is an amazing thing. She has been an amazing asset to, yeah, for the state, but she's been an amazing asset.
Do you see the size of that, that plaque, that trophy plaque?
Yes, yes. We have to acknowledge that.
Pretty great.
All right, Greg, John, who wants to jump in?
I will keep it brief. It's late. Your next meeting is May 17th, and you have two joint meetings coming up. The Joint Public Hearing for the Housing Element is June 5th, and the Joint Work Session on 355 BRT is June 5th.
Okay.
All right, good. Thank you.
And given the hour, I will let my reports go to the next meeting.
Very generous.
All right, if there is nothing else tonight, have a good evening, what's left of it, and we're adjourned.